...by the registrars that we do have a quorum, which is 150. So I'll ask people to come in, take your seats, we're going to get started in just a few minutes. We're on Article 33 of the annual town meeting, and then at eight o'clock, we have to stop for those two articles and the special, and if we haven't finished the annual by then, then we'll go back and finish the annual. So, we'll start in just a few minutes. The seating will be the same for tonight, the non-voting section to my right, and so anybody who's a non-voter has got to sit in that section, if you would please. The voting color tonight is, I guess it's sort of an orange, pink maybe, but you need to gab one of these in order to participate tonight, so if you haven't checked in, you've So before I start with Article 33, I wanted to introduce a new member of the town team, our new finance director, Carol Coppola, she's here to my left, maybe you could stand up, Carol, just so people could see you. She's the new finance director for Howard. So Article 33. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell 4 Central Avenue used for general municipal purposes, used as surplus property. The parcel identified on Assessors Map 6B, L 134 is an approximately four tenths of an acre, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted with said proceeds to be deposited in the sale of land account.
Motion's been made, and second, to accept and adopt Article 33 with the proceeds deposited in the sale of land account. Is there any debate? Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Hi, Jenny Hewitt from Howard Center. I'd like to ask that you vote against this article. I feel like there's no compelling public reason to sell public property so close to the beach. I've looked, driven by, looked where I thought it was. Today, I looked up on Google Maps, and I see it's a stone's throw from the beach. Five or six cars could park there. There are only 10 spaces at Atlantic Avenue Beach now, sometimes used by people in the neighborhood for overflow guests or whatever, so limiting other people outside of that neighborhood that can use the beach. Today, when I looked it up on Google Maps, came up with Street View, it's a picture, which too small for you to see, but there's two vehicles parked here, neighborhood vehicles, I guessed, and right in the middle of the lot is a "No Parking Sign." So, no member of the public would ever know that that space was actually public property and could have been used for parking. So anyway, I love that beach, one of my favorite beaches in town. It's very disappointing when you get there and you find out there's no parking spaces. I'd like the town to keep it, for the small value of selling it, I'd like to keep it and create a couple of public parking spaces there. Thank you.
Any further debate? Yes, ma'am, in the middle.
Kathy Green, I'm chairman of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee. We're charged with looking at town-owned parcels that might be, you know, disposed of or have other uses. We looked at this property, it's .04 of an acre. We reached out to other departments in town to see if there was any use for the parcel, particularly Recreation, who, you know, oversees the beach, and they decided that it was not appropriate for parking because of the amount of foot traffic and cars already there, and in addition, we asked if they might want to just put a picnic table there, and they said no, again because of the traffic situation.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. Again, the motion on Article 33 is accept and adopt the article with the proceeds to be deposited in the sale of land account. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
It is a vote, it only requires a simple majority. Article 34. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell 203 Bank Street used for general municipal purposes, used as surplus property. The current Harbor Masters Maintenance Facility will be relocated. The four parcels contain approximately 2.08 acres, identified in Assessors Map 32, Parcel R 7B, and Assessors Map 23, Parcels B 2, B 2 1, and B 2 3. Proceeds of the sale are to be used to offset capital costs to construct the Harbor Masters Maintenance Facility at Sacotucket Harbor and act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted with said proceeds to be deposited in sale of land account, to be used to offset capital costs to construct the Harbor Masters Maintenance Facility at Sacotucket Harbor, as per Article 20 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting or subsequent articles on this project.
Motion's been made under Article 34, it's accept and adopt with the proceeds to be deposited in the sale of land account, to be used to offset capital costs to construct the Harbor Masters Maintenance Facility at Sacotucket Harbor, as per Article 20 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting or subsequent articles on this project. Debate, Mrs. Corbett.
If this piece were to be sold, what are the building restrictions on that parcel? In other words, what is the future for that piece of land? What could it bring to the town?
Mr. Clark, Chris Clark, Town Administrator. Potential uses for this property?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. We did have the Engineering Department look at it with the Planning Department, and we were able to get two residential parcels in there, so we, two residential parcels is most likely the highest and best use.
Mrs. Corbett.
It is not scenic as it stands, but of course, I'm very concerned about development of an unseemly sort. I think a couple of years ago, there was a suggestion that some sort of facility would take it over, so my concern is that the scenic view toward the Cranberry Bog and the conservation property is just so important, that I am definitely not in favor of this. I'm also curious as to what the anticipated income for the town might be, and I would like to oppose it.
Was that a question about the possible income?
Yeah, I'd like to know what the potential, you know, value is for putting it on sale.
Mr. Clark, any information on value?
I do. The question is a little bit complicated. From the strictly an appraisal standpoint, those two lots are worth over $400,000, so over 10 percent, if you would, of the project cost for Sacotucket, but that appraisal is based upon if there's any contaminants that are in that building that would need to be remediated before that building can be sold. We have done a study, we have identified that there are contaminants in the building, we have not identified what the cleanup cost of those contaminants would be, or demolition cost, if that was a road to go down.
So apparently, an appraisal, Mrs. Corbett, with the development assumption without costs for removal at $400,000, but clearly, there's going to be some cost of removal, according to Mr. Clark.
As I said, it's not scenically appealing, and yet, I am very concerned about this matter, and I oppose this, and urge others to do likewise.
Further debate, Mr. Gunderson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Richard Gunderson, Hiawatha Road. I'd like to make a motion to amend, and the basic purpose of this amendment is to eliminate the connection essentially of the proceeds to the Harbor Masters Maintenance Construction at Sacotucket. Would you like it in writings?
If you could, that'd be great. So, we're on Article 34, the motion is accept and adopt with proceeds to be deposited in the sale of land account, and then there's a phrase, "to be used to offset capital costs to construct the Harbor Masters Maintenance Facility at Sacotucket Harbor, as per Article 20 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting." Mr. Gunderson's amendment proposes to strike that language, so the main motion would be amended to read as follows. "I move that this article be accepted and adopted with said proceeds to be deposited in the sale of land account." Period. So, do I hear a second? Mr. Gunderson, there's got to be one other change, if we're trying to get where you want to be, so let me just look at it for a second. Town Council has pointed out that we've got language still in the motion, that we accept and adopt the article, and the article has that language in it as well. So let me just take a, I think I know where you want to end up, and I'm just going to So there's been a slight change in the amendment, and rather than amend the amendment that he made, I'm going to recognize Mr. Gunderson for the purpose of withdrawing his motion to amend.
I do withdraw.
Okay, and the second are also with their consent, and as I understand it, the new motion would be as follows. "I move that the main motion be amended to read as follows. I move that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to sell the property described in the article, and that the proceeds be deposited in the sale of land account." Is that your new motion?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, and do I hear a second to that? Okay. So, we have a motion to amend properly on the floor, and debate on the amendment, Mr. Gunderson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Basically, this facility was used years ago as a fire station. It's been used most recently as storage facility, and as it says in the article itself, for general municipal purposes. In the past, even the Harbor Master has stated that he doesn't really use any, the whole amount of 67,000 square feet in that space, 4,000 of it being on the first floor. So I really don't feel it's appropriate to specify that the proceeds be solely dedicated to offset costs of any new Harbor Master building. Probably more importantly, though, it should be recognized that the proceeds could be of much greater benefit to the town if we allowed the Selectmen some leeway to pay proceeds, pay the proceeds to pay down debt. That's at least one way it could go. Otherwise, you're hamstringing them, and there's nowhere, no way else they could spend it. Typically, just as an example, if you had two credit card balances, one charging 9% and the other 4%, any extra cash you had, it would be nice if you could pay down the higher percentage debt. So this amendment allows the Board of Selectmen the flexibility to do that. Thank you.
I will tell you that I've been advised by Town Council that even with the main motion, that is to accept and adopt, and the money goes into the sale of land account, to be used to offset, to construct the Harbor Masters Maintenance Facility, even that would require a subsequent appropriation by this town meeting. Once it goes into that sale of land account, it comes back to you, the voters, for a decision. Any further debate on the motion to amend? Harbor Master.
Yes, sir, John Rendell, Harbor Master. I just want to be clear on what Mr. Gunderson mentioned. We do, and have been, in that building since it was vacated by the Fire Department. We maintain it, we do the best we can from a maintenance perspective. He's correct, there's rooms upstairs in the facility that the Boy Scouts have used, the Sea Scouts have used, different organizations have used, but we manage that facility, and we have for an awful long time. That is the Harbor Master Workshop, and I just want to be clear that when we sell it, it's my opinion that that proceeds of that should be utilized to construct our new workshop. So I would ask that you vote no on the amendment. Thank you.
Further debate on the amendment, I see Joan McCarty.
I just wanted to mention, we just approved a very large sum of money for Sacotucket Harbor, to have a Harbor Masters office. That was all in the package we did before, and I think to start to bastardize it by saying, "Well, we'll take this out, and we'll do this," everything was figured out very succinctly by the people on the committee to establish it. So, once we start hacking away, the money isn't going to jump in to some window that says, "Here you are, here's this money that we should have used because it was part of the money, part of the land that was used by the boat, the Harbor Master." Thank you.
Further debate, Mr. DeCosta.
Thank you. Although the Finance Committee hasn't taken this up, the only thought that I have is that if Mr. Gunderson's motion goes forward, it would take the money away from the other project. The other project is the quickest way for you to get some sort of tax relief from this money. In other words, it was designed to go into the other project to help reduce the cost of that project, which would give you a benefit tax-wise on the total impact of that project. So from that point of view, I just see it as the quickest way. Now, you might want to wait longer, or you might not want to, but that is one thought to consider on this.
Ms. Kukunas, on the amendment?
Yes. You said an interesting statement, Mr. Moderator, when the amendment was approved, and I'm not sure if I understood it. The vote in the motion, regardless if it says tonight that we're going to use it for the Harbor Master in the future, Harbor Masters' new project or not, is basically irrelevant because in order to spend money out of the sale of property account, it needs the vote of a future town meeting. So, this is basically a support of, well, we think that's a good idea of it, but quite frankly, it still has to come back to town meeting. Did I understand your statement correctly?
That's the way I understood the advice from Town Council, that was his opinion, that that language in the article, why directory was not mandatory. It's got to come back to the voters for an appropriation.
And the amendment, I'm sorry, because I was reading something, the amendment actually puts the money in the sales of property account?
It does, it puts it in the same sale of property account, just doesn't have the directory language with it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gunderson, anything else on the amendment?
Just one comment. My real fear was that, I think it was expressed by the woman across the hall here, there was a fairly sizable authorization of $3 million. I really didn't want it to be $3,400,000. I think there's a tendency to think that if you're offsetting costs, that means you can spend the three plus whatever's in the bank waiting for you that's been held for the Harbor Masters Maintenance shed or whatever, and I would like to really limit the $3 million to their expenditure. Thank you. At least without another vote, sir.
Mr. McManus, on the amendment?
Well, on the point that was just made, the authorization for the project that was voted last night is $3 million, and unless that's expanded by a subsequent vote, that's what it is. As to the issue of whether or not this is going to provide tax relief for taxpayers of the town, Mr. Lamontia, in arguing in favor of the project last night, indicated that the debt service on that project, for the most part, will be paid for by revenues in the harbor, so very little tax relief will accrue to the taxpayers. However, if the funds from the sale are put into the sale of land account, and subsequently are voted out to reduce one of the debt obligations the town has that is being fully borne by the tax rate, that would provide the maximum tax relief.
Further debate on the amendment, this gentleman right here.
Yes, Bob, Panterdose 89, Bank Street. Just two thoughts, we, last night, we voted a great deal of money for, to negate nitrates and developing a sewage system. So what we're doing here is always encouraging to put two more lots next to a particular area that was designated for relief, and my other thought was, has anyone considered putting a floor on the price that we would sell this particular property at? And we've gotten, now I understand we have an issue, that there may be contaminants either on the site, in the building, and wouldn't be prudent for us to determine what those contaminants are and what the real value of the property is before we sell it. That we end up discounting it prematurely. Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
I think there was three questions, and I want to make sure I get them all. In terms of the two parcels, one of the parcels is mostly, probably about half wetlands, so having HCT, and I'm not going to speak for HCT, but it would be a natural conclusion that HCT would have an interest in acquiring one of those parcels. So it is possible that where it's currently laid out for two house lots, one could be acquired but retained as open space through HCT. So I just want people to know that they are in a butter to the project, and that is certainly a potential.
The second question, as I recall it, was, why not wait on this until we determine what you've described as the contaminants in the property are identified, and what it's going to take to clean those up, and how they impact the value of what the asset may be?
Yeah, I think that's really a judgment call. There'll be sufficient funds that if we were to clean it up and demolish it, we just got the report fairly recently, so we need to go in and see what the estimate is. I can't imagine that the estimate is going to be more than the value of those buildings, or the value of the land.
Can you tell the voters whether the so-called contaminants are asbestos and paint, for example, in the building, as opposed to something in the soil or the water?
Thank you, that was the third one. In terms of the review, it was a Phase 1, so 21E, so they looked at the building. That would be the building in the immediate site, not the parking area. So we looked at the building, there is asbestos in it, as for instance, in some of the vinyl tiles and so on, so we know that most of it is in the building itself, not on the site.
Follow-up questions, sir?
Yes, I'd like to. Thank you for that information. I guess I go back to my original point, that there is some unknowns, we don't really know what the value is, because there may be contaminants. We're somewhat uncertain what the contaminants are, whether they expand beyond the building, which they could, which we don't know. And again, I think it would be prudent for us to, and for the town, to really understand what the value of the property is, again, maybe establishing a floor on the value of the property, given whether it has contaminants or it doesn't. I think it's always, I am always uneasy that we're selling a piece of property, and yet, we don't, there are questions about what its value might be, what its value might be to the town, what its value might be to the Conservation Commission, so I think we should have all of that in front of us before we vote to sell the property. Thank you.
Follow-up on the amendment, Mrs. Corbett, and we're on the amendment now, so let's try and keep our comments to that. We'll be back to the main motion after the amended.
I will delay until after the amendment.
Anything further on the amendment? Looks like you're ready for a vote on that. So we had a main motion that was to accept and adopt the article, as printed, with the proceeds to be deposited in the sale of land account to be used to offset capital costs to construct the Harbor Masters Maintenance Facility at Sacotucket Harbor, per Article 20 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting. And the amendment would revise the main motion to read as follows. "I move that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to sell the property described in the article, and that the proceeds be deposited in the sale of land account." Period. All those in favor of the amendment is read, so signify by saying aye. And those opposed by saying no? No. Okay, so the amendment has failed, so we're now back to the main motion, Mrs. Corbett, if you have something further on that.
Ironic is a mild word for how I want to punctuate this comment. This piece of property is intimately connected to the Cranberry Bog and the restoration of that area, in terms of making it safe for the future and restoring it to good-nature practice. To even contemplate selling it and looking at value in order to create residences that will be serviced by a septic system, which is absolutely inseparable from the conservation property, is patently absurd, and is counter to the way we good citizens of Howard want to spend our funds. It is absolutely unacceptable to sell this property for any sort of use other than possibly the preservation of open space, and so I think we should all oppose it with the good sense that is required to do that.
Further debate on the main motion, this gentleman in the middle.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Robert Dugan, I live at 204 Bank Street, directly across from the property, and question here. I just have some questions concerning the potential uses for this property after the sale. Are there going to be any kind of stipulations as to what the property could be used for? Because once the property sells, pretty much anybody can do whatever is allowed by zoning to do whatever they want to on the property. Now, there are certain things that within Article 3325, Table 1, it's zoned as residential load density, and you're allowed to do certain things on that property, and other things you're allowed to do by special permit. Are the abutters brought into the zoning board of Are the abutters brought into the zoning board of appeals, being petitioned to allow certain things that normally wouldn't be allowed? If you could address that, and also, this does tend to fly in the face of what we voted for last night with the $2 million for the Coldbrook project, because if you do put two residences there, you're going to basically be negating any nitrogen mitigation from that project. So I look forward to the answer to the question. Thank you.
Okay, so a question and then a comment. The question, and Mr. Clark has risen for that, anything more that you can tell the voters about the potential uses of the property after sale?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. I think one thing to point out is that under the procurement law, it's the obligation of the governmental entity to obtain enough value to make sure that it's a fair sale of property. So in terms of that, the reason for the appraisal is to get a fair value that the town would obtain. The second part, which is relevant to your point, the Board of Selectmen, in the determination of putting together an invitation for bid or a request for proposal, can set whatever criteria they want. Because the underlying zoning was residential, the appraisal was done residential, but the Board of Selectmen would be well within their rights to say, we want to obtain value in the amount that we received in the appraisal for the sale of the property for open space, as an example. That's something that the Board would have to decide, but they are well within their rights to do so.
Just a follow-up.
Mr. Dugan?
Just a follow-up, thank you. So would the abutters be brought into that approval process, or is that strictly the zoning board of appeals?
Mr. Clark?
Generally, if we were to sell the property, then whoever the future property owner would be, if we didn't sell it for open space or someone wanted to put residential, then that person would have to develop that property like any other resident or any other person. So potentially, they would have to go if they were going to do something outside of zoning.
I think Mr. Dugan's question relates to the creation of the RFP by the Selectmen and whether or not the abutters would be involved in the RFP. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. That'd probably be better fielded by the Selectmen, but certainly, they have that option to lay that criteria out. If none wish to rise, then that would be something that, you know, is within their determination.
Okay, I just was wondering-
Mr. Lamontia is coming over to speak. And so, I understand your question, and so-
Thank you.
What the question before us is, the RFP that the Selectmen might put together, assuming the Selectmen decided to act on the authorization the town meeting gives it, would that be a process by which the abutters might have input?
They might very well have input, but I think the question you were really asking was, when the property was sold and the people went to the zoning board of appeals, if they wanted to change from the residential piece, what happens? Well, one of the things that happens is all the abutters within, I believe, 100 feet or 200 feet get notified of when the meeting is and they can participate in that meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
But I think that's what you were asking.
Yes, sir.
I see Mr. Brophy there. Is that right?
It's actually abutters to abutters within 300 feet and those directly across the street, which might apply to you, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Further debate? Yes, ma'am?
Can you clarify, my name's Carol Drake, I live on Bittersweet Lane. Can you clarify why you did not make stipulation of what you plan to put the property up for sale for before we vote, as opposed to after we vote for or against the sale?
Question is, why the article doesn't provide for a specific use upon resale? Not sure I see anybody rising. I think what people are thinking is this, Mrs. Drake, I think, and it's just assumption of my part, not having been involved in the article, but it's zoned residential, there's an appraisal for two lots, it's assumed that that's what it would be used for. I think those are the assumptions that the voters should act- Hearing nothing else, I think those are the assumptions the voters should act on.
As opposed to clarifying it to be equal with the other, if you're going to be fixing the Cranberry Bog back to original, why are you going to endanger it by putting two properties next to it that could endanger fixing it? So I'm just asking why it wasn't stipulated together.
Not sure I can answer that one for you. So further debate, I see Mr. Thompson up patiently. We're on Article 34, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I have several questions on this parcel. As to, several years ago, I spoke to the parcels in the rear that were kind of wet property, and the town was attempting to sell those off at that time. The town would still own that area that went to conservation, as I'm assuming. It doesn't say anything about that back land. But the other questions I have on this property, the town would have no access to that back property once the front property was sold, and would the parcel being offered for sale be able to support a septic system? As for many years, and the fellow that lives across the street from it, down on Bank Street, would attest to that there's times that the groundwater is very high, as the old fire station basement used to go underwater several times a year. So, and the other part is, it says the road would be rescinded, so it appears there'd be no access to any of the back property. So if you could answer any of those questions, or I think the property needs a little more homework to determine all of these things, whether it would be a fair sale or just turn the whole thing over to conservation. So if somebody wanted to offer some questions on those.
As I followed your questions, one were, is there going to be any reservation of access over the property to what you believe to be town property in the back? And two, whether or not there's been any exploration for an onsite septic system, given the high groundwater in that area? Mr. Clark?
I'm going to give this a try. I promised myself I wasn't good at zoning, so. In terms of the back parcels, there's nothing in terms of, those are already conservation. I don't believe there's a trail system that's on that, so that's not part of this motion. It's only the front parcels. And I think, as I alluded to earlier, that we're seeking the value for the highest and best use, which is what we need to do under the procurement law, for the value of those parcels. The Selectmen could put those out for RFP and say, we only want them to be sold for open space and not necessarily for what's allowed for under the underlying zoning, which would be two residential units. So I would imagine we have a septic system there now for the Harbor Masters' office, so we would most likely have the availability of that as a minimum.
Okay. Just-
Mr. Thompson?
Over the years, the back end of that lot was filled with street sweepings. The highway department used to dump back there because it was quite low. Once they had filled it, they expanded the building. So I don't know, you know, I really think it should be looked at very carefully before it's put on the market and determine what really is there. Thank you.
Further debate? Yes, sir?
Yes, thank you. I guess what I keep hearing is that there's a lot of ambiguity about the lot, how it's going to be used. Mr. Thompson, his concerns about groundwater. I think we should vote this down until such time that we come back with a proposal that really demonstrates what the lot's going to be used for, whether we're going to use it for conservation, which I guess would probably be an easy sell. But I think until that time comes, I think we should vote this down and come back with another proposal. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion under Article 34? I see Mr. Locke rising. Mr. Locke is the executive director of the Harwich Conservation Trust. He's a resident of Brewster, and our bylaw requires town meeting consent for a non-voter to speak. Anybody object to hearing from Mr. Locke on this article? Hearing none, Mr. Locke?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brewster used to be part of Harwich, so appreciate the opportunity.
We should have kept it, Mike.
Yeah. So I just wanted to mention that the way this article is written, if the voters do grant authority by approval of this article to the Selectmen for the sale of this property, does not preclude that sale to be for conservation purposes. It has been pointed out that Harwich Conservation Trust, HCT, does own the 60-plus-acre Robert F. Smith Coldbrook Preserve adjacent to the south, so we do have an interest in the future of this property that's subject to this article.
Further debate, this gentleman in the middle.
Sebastian Mudry, 54 Smith Street, West Harwich. I believe that this article needs to be denied, and it's a substitute, that property in question be gifted to HCT, Harwich Conservation Trust, with the stipulation that they will tear down the buildings and restore the property to a natural state. That would be their only cost. I don't, I wanted to save money, just like every other taxpayer. I would love to buy that property myself, but that's selfish. I don't think we should sell the property, take the chance that it be lost, that there be a house there, that there be another septic system. I believe that we can and should deny this article and instead gift it, gift this property to Harwich Conservation Trust with the stipulation.
The gifting, sir, would have to take another article at another town meeting, so we can't do that within the scope of this article. But you certainly can vote no if that's your wish.
So that would be my choice to vote no. And for the substitute motion, in whatever it's appropriate in the future, that this be gifted to HCT with the stipulation that they tear down the structures, restore it to a natural state, that's their only cost.
Further debate on the main motion, Mr. Kakounas?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's disturbing to me because the last vote that we just took on the amendment was overwhelmingly passed by the people in this room to take this money and allocate it to a project that we passed last night. And quite frankly, I think that that is a problem, because as the gentleman just said that just spoke at the mic, I also believe, maybe not gifting it, but I believe we should go through the process. The 30B procurement laws are very stringent on how we arrive at a valuation, and it's really going to fall on the RFP that the Selectmen decide to put out. And when you put an RFP out, they have three criterias of rating them. Is it most advantageous, advantageous, or not advantageous? And basically, if they put out there an RFP that says the most advantageous is going to be a use that is tied to conservation, it will help, if you will, an organization that is interested in this piece of property, that may happen to be a conservation organization, to be able to buy it legally. And then, as I think was said earlier, if that cost is lower than what the appraised value is, the town would be able to say, well, we're taking, let's say, for instance, it's valued at 400 and somebody buys it for 100, we could say that we're taking a $300,000 donation because we decided to go with the conservation person who answered the RFP. Unfortunately, to begin that process, town meeting does have to give the authority to the Selectmen to move forward, to put out those RFPs and to follow the 30B procurement process. But I don't know how to vote on this, because quite frankly, this room very strongly said they want this money to go to the harbor, and they did not want to accept the previous amendment. If they had accepted the previous amendment, I would be all in favor of moving this forward because we would be doing it not to try to make 400 grand or 300 grand, but we'd be doing it to do the right thing with it, which obviously, the right thing for this piece of property is for an RFP to be drafted so that a conservation association who's interested in it could in fact be the most advantageous bidder. And I'm not going to name names because that's illegal to do that. We're presuming that we know who's going to buy it. I'm not saying that. But we need to draft an RFP that makes it possible for a conservation association to bid on this. And quite frankly, I'm not sure if removing the building is smart in that scenario either. I mean, I know of some conservation agencies and associations that may want to invest some money into that building and use it for seminars and use it for putting in their, storing birdhouses that they have to take in every winter and storing benches that they put out in the summertime. There are many conservation organizations on the Cape that do that kind of thing, and I think this building, you know, may be advantageous to them with being able to add a little bit of money to it. So, you know, I stand up here confused, and I admit it, because if you had voted the amendment, then I'd be saying to you, absolutely, let's vote this whole thing through, because quite frankly, we're on the same page, we're sending a message to the Selectmen, do the right thing, put the right kind of RFP out there, because we don't care to get the 300 grand or 400 grand to put towards the Sacquet Tucket Harbor project. But that's not what you guys said, so I'm not sure how I'm voting.
Before I get to further debate, just so it's clear, you haven't voted to do anything yet. What you did was simply reject a proposed amendment to the motion, but you haven't voted anything yet. Mrs. Corbett?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kakounas, for confusing me further. So now, I would like to ask, could the Board of Selectmen, or could this offer have been made in the first place with the intent to say, we're going to favor an RFP, whatever this is, for conservation use? Or are we, if we, if anyone were to support this, which clearly I'm urging you not to, is it a gift of trust to the Board of Selectmen to then decide how they want to feature it? So that's my question.
Yes, ma'am?
Kathleen Tien-
Well, wait a minute, Mrs. Corbett apparently has asked a question.
Sorry.
I'm not sure that you can get where you want to be within the context of this article, Mrs. Corbett. Mr. McManus, were you responding to her?
Yeah, I was. The issue is, apparently, there's a lot of people that feel that have gotten up to speak, that feel that it should be sold for conservation uses. However, by voting for this amendment, there is no way of knowing in the audience tonight how many are supporting that use as opposed to those people are supporting it being sold to raise the most amount of money to be used for potentially debt, tax relief.
Yes, ma'am?
Kathleen Tien, 3 Pleasant Avenue, Harwich Port. From what I'm hearing, the current article before us allows us to do both, to sell the property and help with the cost of the new Sacquet Tucket Harbor project, and through what the Selectmen are hearing today, to have a priority to make the property open space and conservation land. So I think it's a win-win, and if we vote this article in, we can do both. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion before you? Looks like you're ready for a vote. So the motion on Article 34 is that the article be accepted and adopted, with said proceeds to be deposited in the sale of land account, to be used to offset capital costs to construct the Harbor Masters' maintenance facility at Sacquet Tucket Harbor, as per Article 20 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, or subsequent articles on this project. All those in favor of that motion has read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
I'm going to have to take a standing count. If there are folks out there that would volunteer to be tellers, if you'd come forward, anyone rising, Mr. Thompson? Anyone else? Joan? Joan, would you be a teller? That'd be great. Mr. Brophy, you be a teller? Great.
Sway in. Got to sway in, Joan. I just solemnly swear in firm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a teller, so help me God. So, you're going to divide yourself, this is Allen, this is front table, and the two future sections. Joan, the floor section on this side, and anyone on the back that's behind the floor section. Tom? She's taking her half back, so coordinate. Tom, you're going to take the floor on this side. The finance committee, not the narcotics section, in the back porch section. Finance committee in the back porch section.
Okay, the tellers have been sworn in.
You all set on that, Joan? Got to set it on zero.
Okay, the tellers have been sworn in and set the counters to zero. Again, it's Article 34, and I'm going to read the motion one more time. Motion is that the article be accepted and adopted, with said proceeds to be deposited in the sale of land account to be used to offset capital costs to construct the Harbor Masters Maintenance Facility at Sacquetucket Harbor as per Article 20 of the 2017 Annual Town Meeting or subsequent articles on this project. Mr. Thompson.
28.
Ms. McCarty.
36.
Pardon?
36.
Mr. Brophy? I think he got them, Tom. Okay, so we're going to have to do, yeah, he was taking these. So if you've counted them, should. Okay, all right. So I need you two to count your sections again. Sorry, we got a bit of a mix-up, so we're going to count this side of the hall one more time. All those in favor of the motion on this side of the hall, including this front table, please rise, show your voter card. He's taking this. Mr. Brophy? What was your number?
31.
31. And Mr. Evans? Mr. Evans, 24. Okay. Now, all those opposed to the motion, those in opposition, please rise and be counted. Mr. Thompson?
5.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Brophy? And Ms. McCarty?
26.
So those in favor of the motion, 119, those opposed, 75. It only requires a simple majority, the motion carries. We're going to do one more article before I do the two articles in the special. So Article 35. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deem in the best interest of the town, all or a portion of the Sacquetucket landslide prop, excuse me, Sacquetucket Harbor landslide property and the so-called Downey property, as shown in a sketch plan entitled Sacquetucket Harbor Landside Improvements, for boat storage, passenger boat ticketing, and retail restaurant-related purposes for a term not to exceed 10 years, including all extension and renewal options, said property having been acquired for general municipal purposes and to act fully there on. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted.
It's been moved in second and this article be accepted and adopted. Is there any debate?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
John Hour, Harwich Port. I'd like to make an amendment to the article.
Why don't you bring it forward and we'll take a look at it? So the proposed amendment from Mr. Hour is that the word boat storage be removed from the article. So we have a motion, and we vote on motions, not on articles. So we have a motion to accept and adopt the article as printed, and this amendment would be to accept and adopt the article as printed, except that the word, the phrase boat storage be stricken. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. The amendment, debate, Mr. Hour?
Yes. Little background, I'm representing the Harwich Port Boat Yard. We've been working on Wichman Harbor for over 50 years. We have 19 slips. We're just a small yard. I have five full-time employees that I keep year-round. The major part of our business is boat storage. What I really worry about is my five employees. I honestly don't know how I can keep them going year-round if I lose a major part of this. The town's never, well, I can't say that. Over at Sacquetucket Harbor, basically, the boat storage has gone to private companies. You'll see them up on Queen Anne Road and around town. You know, we do a good job over there. We've installed collection systems that make sure we take care of any wastewater from power cleaning boats. We'd install a boat ramp so we can haul and move the boats around in our own yard. That was an $80,000 investment. Seven years ago, I paid $500,000 for a piece of property on Queen Anne Road to store my boats. Alls I want to do is just stay in business, and I hope that you'll support me in this article, in this amendment.
Any further debate?
You know, not for nothing, but this is exactly why I had a problem with this project from day one, and I'm so thrilled that finally a businessperson has stood up to let you know the effects of things like this that we do. I mean, quite frankly, you know, we're not, the town is in the business to provide services to the taxpayers. That's why a town exists. That's why we pay our taxes, so they will give us a service, provide us with services. We're not in the business to create an environment where we are subsidizing businesses. This is a perfect example of why I tried to amend last night's article. And I, you people don't really understand the potential impact that doing things like this could possibly have. This gentleman just mentioned the fact that, you know, he has invested a lot of his own money and his family's money into a business. More importantly than that, and I know there's probably many of you out there that don't really care if people invest money in things, but more importantly to that, he's providing jobs, local jobs, for residents of this town and keeping them employed year-round, which in fact builds our community. More importantly even than that, when we go out for this rental space and we become competition for them, I'm not sure who's going to answer these RFPs because as I mentioned earlier, and I know I confused Mrs. Corbett with it, but the 30B procurement laws are strict. So we're going to have to put RFPs out and go out, and there's nothing that's preventing some company from Falmouth, or worse than that even, I don't know, I don't know the boat business, but there's nothing stopping somebody from coming in and using the town of Harwich's property to in fact make money. People have invested a lot of money, and again, I am completely ignorant to the boat business, but I hear and I understand that because of the new EPA regulations and the new government rules that are in place, there's a lot of money that's being invested by boatyards for when they pressure wash these boats and they clean them, when they come out of either salt or fresh water, and how they are stored with it when they are covered, to make sure that the drainage and all that is encapsulated. You know, I, I have to support the amendment because quite frankly, that's what I've been saying up here for the last two days, and this is a perfect example. I kind of had wished the owner of Brock's Landy had come up last night and tried to amend last night's motion. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion to amend. I see the Harbor Masters is up. Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to kind of touch on what Mr. Hour has said. So, you know, for quite some time, we leased Allen Harbor Lot to Allen Harbor Marine for boat storage, and now that has shifted to Sacquetucket, and that's essentially the group of boats that you see now stored over at Sacquetucket. And so when I brought the proposal forward to the Board of Selectmen, it's always the intent of this department to be able to lease space for businesses like Allen Harbor Marine, who frankly, and I know we have a gentleman here who's going to speak to Allen Harbor Marine, but to be able to provide a space for boat storage that we just lease the space and they run it. And when I proposed this to the board, we split up the Downey property into certain sections, and we put it out for a public bid for folks, businesses, to lease space. And, you know, at the time, Allen Harbor Marine was the one who responded, and it was somewhat temporary because we were anticipating the construction project and the, you know, and that would have interrupted. But I think there is a need out there for space for boat storage, and so that was the intent of what we're trying to do here. So I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Further debate on the amendment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Roger Peterson. I live in Mark Lane. I work for Allen Harbor Marine, and I know our company has leased space from the town, the parking lot in Allen Harbor, for decades, and we kind of rely on that space to store our customers' boats. So not allowing us to lease property from the town for the winter would hurt our business. Thank you.
Further debate? Yes, sir.
Dean Knight, South Harwich. We spent a lot of money on the Downey property, and the idea was to make it the focal point of the town. And unfortunately, with where we live, our climate, our boating season's pretty short. So it was great to look at the Downey property and see the pizza place come down and get cleaned up, and now it's filled with, with boats, they're, you know, with shrink wrap, and we're going to be looking at them for the next eight months. I get that we want to make revenues for the town and try to have a, at least a revenue-neutral, if not profitable, Harbor Masters Department, but as Mr. Kakounas said, and as Mr. Hour said, there are private businesses who, who do this, and I think if we want to use the Downey property and the harbor as a year-round facility, you're looking at 10 years, 10-year lease for eight months out of the year, at least. So I would support this, this amendment.
Further debate, gentleman in the middle.
Yes, Roger Drake, 20 Bitter Sweet Lane. I just wanted to point out that last night, when we voted on Article 20, and if I can read from Article 20, nowhere in Article 20 does it state that there's going to be boat storage. It says, "Sacquetucket Harbor Land Renovations to Include: A new Harbor Master office building, a lease snack shack, six rented seasonal vendor shacks, a boardwalk with viewing areas that overlook the marina, and a passenger boat ticket office for booths and Harbor Master Department Maintenance Facility building." I believe you should support the amendment.
Further debate, Mr. Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, I'd like to ask Mr. Hour, because we're hearing that we're, the capacity's maxed out, and we need to do this because there's a need in the community. Are you maxed out in your storage capacity during the entire year?
I'm sorry, we didn't have the benefit, at least up here, of Mr. Hour's response to that, and I'd like the whole meeting to hear it.
Yes, sir.
So the question asked of you, Mr. Hour, was, are you maxed out on your space for boat storage?
No, I am not.
And no, you're not. Okay. I just wanted everybody to be able to share that. Any further debate on the motion to amend the main motion? Looks like you're ready for a vote. So we had a main motion on the floor, which was accept and adopt. Mr. Hour's proposed amendment is the article be accepted and adopted as printed, except that the phrase boat storage be stricken. All those in favor of the amendment as read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
The amendment carries. So we're now back to the main motion as amended. Any further debate on the main motion as amended? I don't see any, so we'll take a vote on that. Again, the main motion now is that the article be accepted and adopted as printed, except that the phrase boat storage be stricken. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no? The motion carries. Mr. Brown?
I move that the annual town meeting be adjourned until the conclusion of the special town meeting.
Okay, motion's made in second to adjourn this annual town meeting, so we'll go to the special town meeting, complete those two articles, and then we'll come back to the annual town meeting. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no? The annual town meeting is adjourned until the close of the special town meeting. I'll now recognize the town clerk, Mrs. Doucette, to read the return of the warrant for the special town meeting. Mrs. Doucette.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Town of Harwich, Special Town Meeting, May 2nd, 2017, Barnstable County, to either of the constables of the Town of Harwich and said county greetings. Barnstable County, to either of the constables of the Town of Howard and said county greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Community Center Gymnasium, 100 Oak Street, in said town on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017, at 8:00 PM, then and there to act on the following articles. Hereof fail not to make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and the place of said meeting given under our hands this 20th day of March, 2017. Signed, Michael D. McCaskill, Chairman; Peter S. Hughes, Vice Chairman; Julie E. Kavanaugh, Clerk; Janelle M. Brown, Board of Selectmen. Signed, David Robinson, Constable. April 12th, 2017, by virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Howard qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Community Center, 100 Oak Street, in said town on Tuesday, the 2nd day of May, 2017, at the time and the place for the purpose herein named by posting up attested copies thereon in the four post office buildings and in the town hall in the Town of Howard, which covers all four precincts at least 14 days before the time of said meeting as within directed and causing an attested copy thereof to be published in the Cape Cod Chronicle, published in Barnstable County, and having its circulation in the Town of Howard. Signed, David Robinson, Constable.
Thank you, Mrs. Doucette. So we've now heard the return of the warrant for the special town meeting. I'll declare a quorum present for the special town meeting. We're on Article 1. Mr. Brown? See if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to fund fiscal year 2007 snow and ice deficit account and act fully thereon.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, that $250,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
So the motion on Article 1 is accept and adopt. The amount is $250,000, and it's proposed to be transferred from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All in favor of the motion as read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no? It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to fund shortfalls and various budget transfers and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and that $120,000 be transferred to health insurance account, $30,000 transferred from salary and wages, police, $30,000 be transferred from salary and wages, fire, and $20,000 be transferred from salary and wages, ambulance, for a total of $200,000 to the DPW solid waste account to offset shortages due to large volume of municipal solid waste and construction debris.
So the motion under Article 2 is accept and adopt. The following sums are proposed to be transferred: $120,000 from health insurance account, $30,000 from salary and wages, police, $30,000 transferred from salary and wages, fire, $20,000 transferred from salary and wages, ambulance, and this is a total of $200,000 to the DPW solid waste account to offset shortages due to large volume of municipal solid waste and construction debris. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no? It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Now entertain a motion to adjourn the special town meeting.
I move we adjourn the special town meeting?
All those in favor of adjourned the special town meeting so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no? Special town meeting is adjourned, and we're now back to the annual town meeting. We were on Article 36, but we did Article 36. If you were here last night, we did it before Article 4. So we're going to jump over to Article 37, and this is one of the articles that I indicated I would not read in its entirety. It's a proposed zoning bylaw amendment to create a moratorium for sale and distribution of recreational marijuana. Article 37, to see if the town will vote to amend the town code of the Town of Howard's zoning bylaws and adding that new section, 325-134. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted.
Yes, a move in second that Article 37 be accepted and adopted. I'll go to Mr. Brophy, the chairman of the planning board, for the planning board report.
Mr. Moderator, on Thursday, April 13th of this year, 2017, the planning board held a duly advertised and scheduled public meeting, hearing. All members of the public having an interest in the proposed article were welcome to attend and give comment. Public comment was favorable on the proposed article. The board voted unanimously to recommend the article be adopted at town meeting. This is a temporary moratorium on the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana until 30 June, 2018. Would you like a copy of the...?
Yes, I would, for the town clerk's records. Thank you, Mr. Brophy. Then I'll turn to, I guess, next... Do you have a report, Mr. Howell?
That's a short one, yes.
Okay.
The Bylaw Charter Review Committee held a public hearing on Thursday, April 27, 2017, for the purpose of soliciting comments as to form relating to Article 37. No negative comments were received. The proposed language was reviewed by the Bylaw Charter Review Committee and was found to be consistent with the structure of the town's charter and the code of the Town of Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Now debate on the motion. Mr. Brophy, do you have anything further? Thank you. Anyone have anything they want to say in this article? Mr. Weiser? Bob Weiser?
Six Birch Drive, still. I just have one question. If somebody could tell us, when the referendum was held, what was the vote in Howard on whether or not to legalize the recreational use of marijuana?
Do you know, Mr. Brophy?
I'll take a wild guess, but I believe the chief has the exact number.
Okay. So Chief Gilmet, chief police, do you have that number?
I do, sir.
Okay. Now, just a formality, the chief is not a resident of the town and a voter, and under our bylaw, he needs permission. Hearing nobody objecting, Chief Gilmet. I'd like to just get the answer to that question first, because Mr. Weiser has the floor.
Yes, it was 4,449 no, 3,982 yes. So it was 52.8% against legalization and 47.2% for legalization.
Mr. Weiser?
And we know what the state results were. I just think that there is a process going on here, as has been going on for years, where the public clearly wants this to be allowed, and there is a foot-dragging and a resistance on the part of those who don't really want to honor the public's preferences. I just want to say that for the record, because I know where the vote's going.
Further debate on the motion, which is to accept and adopt the article as printed? Yes, sir.
Same name as before, Sebastian Mutry, 54 Smith Street, West Harwich. I agree with the previous speaker. This is unnecessary. We moved from West Virginia, one of the reasons we moved from West Virginia, was because of an arrest made the first page of the Charlestown Gazette. A man received, a young man, early twenties, two years for growing two marijuana plants. That was one of the reasons that we left that state. We came to Massachusetts, vacationed. I always vacationed when I taught in Connecticut, here on the Cape. My wife has family here on the Cape, and we wanted a progressive state. The state supports recreational marijuana. It's legal. I don't want to be the town that is regressive. There is more of a problem with marijuana sales that are illegal and subjecting youth then to those who would push other drugs beyond legal recreational marijuana. So please, let's be progressive Massachusetts. Let's follow the state's lead. Let's not be a backward town and dig in our heels and wait another year. Let's get this approved, excuse me, let's get this article rejected so we can move forward in legalizing recreational marijuana. As a personal side, I don't even like the smell of marijuana. I'm not going to smoke if it's legal. I don't want it in my lungs. I don't want to breathe a room, in a room, with marijuana smoke. But if someone chooses to do so, if they are an adult, 21 or over, I believe they should have the right in the Town of Howard.
Yeah, just so it's clear, this article doesn't prevent that. It is legal to smoke it in the Town of Howard. This simply is a proposed moratorium on the zoning bylaw for the establishment to sell recreational marijuana at retail. And so this is, what's being proposed to the town meeting is, should we wait a period of time to study to see where we would put a retail marijuana establishment? Not whether it's legal to smoke it. That's already been decided. Just so you're aware, sir. Further debate, Mr. Kokounis?
Since by confessing, I'm a bourbon man myself, I'm not a big pot fan either. We absolutely have to pass this. If any of you have been, and I know many of the faces, I see the same ones here, let's go back 10 years and remember the strip joint legalization, and you remember the same thing that we had to do then. The state said that every community had to have a ability for a strip joint to come to town, or adult entertainment, if you will. What we did was, we put a moratorium put on it, our planning board through open meeting process took a long time, we came forward with some excellent zoning, so that we now do allow adult entertainment establishments in the town, but the town has decided where they're going to go. And the only argument that I would go against the previous speaker with, I'm not particularly comfortable with the state coming in and telling the Town of Howard where these establishments can go, because right now the state is saying they can go anywhere, which means if a hobby shop on Route 28 in Howardport that sells model airplanes could in fact sell recreational marijuana, if, whatever, it's just open, it can go anywhere. We need to do the right thing when we're talking about planning and building our community, and the right thing is to take the moratorium, pass it this evening, allow the town to talk about it, allow public input in it, and allow us and the department heads, the board of health, they may want to control it like, have a permit like you have to have when you buy cigarettes. They may want to attach it to alcohol. I don't know how they want to handle it, but this only says, wait a minute, we're not going to let anyone who wants to sell recreational marijuana to do it in our town right now. We're putting a stop and putting a moratorium on it, because we want to come forward to regulate it properly. So please, support this.
Mr. McPowell from the planning board?
Mr. Moderator, as a member of the planning board, we had a presentation from the chief of police and Detective Sergeant Brackett as to the moratorium and why they thought it was appropriate for the town. Could we hear from one or the other of them, I don't care which one, as to the reasons why they... It's really based on their advice, I think, that our board voted to support the moratorium.
Understood. Either the chief or Detective want to... Chief Gilmet?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And just to reiterate, previous point made, it is, there seems to be a lot of confusion relating to this new law, and it is still perfectly legal today, and this article voted tonight will have no effect. It's perfectly legal to possess an ounce or less of marijuana, to cultivate up to six plants, and to consume marijuana within the Town of Howard privately. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that, and this article will not affect that at all. It will also not affect anything having to do with medical marijuana dispensaries. So I just wanted to say that the police department is 100% behind this article, and the reasons we stated that at the public hearing was that it's just a wise move. There's still a lot of state regulation that has not even been created. There's supposed to be this Cannabis Control Commission that also needs to be appointed. Rushing into something like this and allowing it to happen to us instead of tapping the brakes and getting as much information as possible gathered, I think is reckless. This is not something that can be a wait and see. As I understand the legislation as it stands now, if nothing else happens from the state and this body does nothing to put any regulation or bylaw, zoning bylaw, moratorium in place, we could have a retail marijuana outlet person request a permit as early as April of 2018, which would be before we could do anything else at a town meeting. So that's the way I understand it, and that's why I feel there's an urgency tonight, and that you recognize the importance of this vote, that retail, this is strictly about retail marijuana sales, okay? It's not about private cultivation, private consumption, any of that. Strictly allowing retail marijuana sales, or where they're going to be, or how they're going to operate. There are too many unknowns right now, and this is just simply saying, let's give ourselves a year, we'll gather all the information, we can look at places like out in Colorado, what has happened to communities out there, but this is not really the venue to start discussing those things. This is simply, supporting this article is simply saying, listen, we're going to take a measured approach to this, we're going to tap the brakes and gather all the information and make an informed decision, because after all, this is something that could potentially severely impact the quality and character of this community. And I welcome those debates in those sessions. This is not the time and place to really discuss that. This is just to explain that this article, you know, is the best for the town at this point to gather the information and then make the informed decision as we move forward, what's in the best interests of the community.
Thank you, chief. The article does propose the moratorium would expire on June 30th, 2018, so we'd have another annual town meeting before then. Further debate on the main motion? Mr. Weiser?
I was going to resist the urge to speak again, but I can't help myself, because it seems to me the thing that the chief failed to point out is that as long as we push this further and further away, all we are doing is enabling the criminal element that now engages in the retail sale of marijuana to continue their business. And that is what I find undesirable, and I think recognizing the fact that the voters have made it clear in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and close to a majority, though not quite a majority, even here in our conservative community of Howard, it seems to me that it would make a lot more sense to license somebody to sell the stuff and regulate it that way and be proactive than to keep on pushing it away as far as we can, as if it's not going to happen, and in the meantime, the only way that people can do this is by violating the law. You can't buy a Growlite to grow your own marijuana, because all of those details are spelled out in glorious detail in this thing that we haven't read, all of the things you're not allowed to obtain in order to exercise your rights that the voters have voted on. So I just want this to be on the table so we understand the process. Let's keep it simple. Let's vote this thing down and give somebody a license and get it over with.
Any further debate on the motion? Looks like you're ready for a vote. This is a zoning bylaw amendment, requires a two-thirds majority to pass. Motion before you is the article be accepted and adopted. All those in favor of the motion as read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
I rule it got the necessary two-thirds majority. And passes. Article 38, and this is another one I said I would not read in its entirety. See if the town will vote to propose the following amendments to the Town of Howard Home Rule Charter, to be approved by the voters at the next annual town election as follows, and then they're listed on the following pages. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted.
Motion under Article 38 is accept and adopt. Mr. Howell? Mr. Howell, do you have a report and then perhaps some comments?
Yes, I do, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, the report, the Bylaw Charter Review Committee held a public hearing on Thursday, April 27, 2017, for the purpose of soliciting comments as to form relating to Article 38. No negative comments were received. The proposed language was reviewed by the Bylaw Charter Review Committee and was filed. The proposed language was reviewed by the Bylaw Charter Review Committee and was found to be consistent with the structure of the town's charter and the code of the town of Harwich. Can I proceed on the report? End here?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I'll take that one.
This is the Bylaw Charter Review Committee's article. The committee has been on a path for the past several years to review the town's current operations to see if they align with the charter and/or the code of the town of Harwich. This year, we are proposing several different changes. The first will improve transparency in government. Currently, there's a different number of committees that are referenced in both the charter and the code. In some instances, the number of members specified for the same committee varies from one document to the other. This happened in one instance because the town voted at a town meeting to amend the code for that particular committee, a process which is perfectly allowable under the charter, but did not make the same change to align the charter itself. This can confuse the citizens of the town of Harwich, never, not to mention the members of town government itself. So part of the changes being sponsored by us represent a two-year commitment on the part of the Bylaw Charter Review Committee to delete the reference in the charter to specific committee membership numbers, and to direct the reader to the bylaws section of the code of the town of Harwich. Even if passed tonight, the charter change pursued in this manner we have chosen, does not take effect until the town votes at the next year's local town election to approve the changes. So you can expect the needed changes to the code of the town of Harwich to appear at next year's town meeting. Another change being proposed is critically important to the operation of town government and is fundamental to the meaning of the Home Rule Charter itself. We are clarifying the role of the Board of Selectmen Liaison to be consistent with the intent of the charter and the Board of Selectmen's own rules of operation. Specifically, that they not be allowed to serve on committees that they appoint members to. Rather liaisons, which are not addressed in the charter itself by name, in the original edition, have a newly defined role as facilitating better two-way communication between the Board of Selectmen and the various committees that they are appointed to. The language also makes it clear that a liaison does not speak for the board as a whole unless the board has a voted position in a particular matter, nor should the liaison engage in active committee deliberations. Here, I'm going to depart from the text just a second and personally thank the Board of Selectmen for the excellent support we've had this year for revamping the charter. It's truly been a cooperative endeavor, and I certainly appreciate it. In closing, I would like to remind everyone that last year's proposed charter changes, having passed at the 2016 annual meeting, will be on the town election ballot this year. They will not take effect unless they pass, so we urge your informed attention when you go out to vote this year. Now, I'm expecting a couple of friendly questions to clarify a couple of these numeric changes.
Let's see. Any further debate? Mr. Waystack?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Richard Waystack, Harwich, and I rise to speak as a member of the Board of Assessors. And I bring your attention to page 43, number 7, subsection 7-6-1, which strikes the three members of the Board of Assessors and allows the use of 1, 3, 5, 7, or 9 members may be appointed. My concern with this is if it is voted, I want to make sure it's not binding, and I'm not making an amendment to this, but I, I need some clarification, because your Board of Assessors acts as a three-member body. If it went down to one member, which could happen under this amendment, there are many times that potential conflicts arise at the Board of Assessors. And if that would happen, you would find potential senior tax credits, abatements, that if there was a conflict of interest and action was not taken on something specifically, it is deemed denied. The policy of the Board of Assessors for the last 13 years is that we would never deny an application because of lack of action. That's my first point. The second, the last sentence says, "One member at least shall be professionally qualified for the duties of the office." The Department of Revenue for the state requires any appointed or elected assessor to be qualified by the State Department of Revenue. So not one member, but every member that is appointed by the Board of Selectmen must, by law, be certified by the state. Can someone please clarify, if we vote this tonight, could there indeed, the Board of Assessors be one member?
Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is absolutely not our intention to, to change the method of operation of any of these committees. As I said, we wanted to get all of the numbers in one document, so it wasn't confusing about what you were referencing. In doing so, and I don't want to confuse the members of your audience here at a town meeting, but in doing so, there were certain committees that are, that appear in mass general law, in legislation, and there's numbers. Now, we, we can trump numbers on a home rule charter. We cannot do that in a bylaw, so we needed to create a context in which we could specify what the number was. The, the area that you're talking about is one of those. We have no intention of changing it from anything but three. The Youth and Rec Commission is another one of those areas. It's codified under state law. We are not making any attempt to change the status quo of what we got in this document. You can expect a follow-on action next year that will indeed say there will be three assessors and whatever the number is for the Youth and Rec Commission, but in order for that to stick, we needed to be able to have the governing document, which is the charter, that's above all else, to give a range so that we were afforded the opportunity to then go into the bylaws and make it stick. It's a long-winded explanation, but we have no intention of changing anything that's there in reality, but it is indeed confusing to have to refer to two documents.
Follow-up, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Waystack.
I'm always concerned when I hear, "It is not our intention." My concern, and I would, if I could, Mr. Moderator, throw you to either the town administrator, member of the Board of Selectmen, or town council, if that you can assure this body tonight, that if this is voted, while it may not be in the intention of the Bylaw Review Committee, that there will not be a reduction in the Board of Assessors from three members to one, that could substantially harm the taxpayers of this community.
Mr. Howell?
I'll defer it one second, but I can promise you one thing. We have gone back to the process of adopting charter changes in the manner that we had always done up until 10 years ago, which is, town meeting takes an action this year, and then at the ballot next year, you have to vote that in affirmatively. The guarantee I can give you is ironclad. If you don't see a bylaw coming along next year that specifies what I'm promising you this year, you can turn it down at the ballot and this action will have no effect whatsoever.
I will most likely see you next year.
Mr. McManus, further debate?
Well, on, on the matter that Mr. Waystack has raised, if you turn to page 42, the previous page, item number 2, amend Chapter 3, Subsection 3-6-1, Powers of Appointment, it indicates that the Board of Selectmen shall have the power to appoint, and it lists a number of positions, including three assessors for overlapping three-year terms. It doesn't say shall have the authority, the power to appoint one assessor. It says three assessors, which I think speaks to a surety that we will continue the practice of having three assessors.
Further debate? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Goldsmith.
Vicki Goldsmith on Paddock Drive. So, could you walk us through another example? I don't like to admit to not understanding this, but for example, number 13 on page 44, so theoretically, could you be establishing a zoning Board of Appeals that would routinely only have three members hearing cases, or is not, that not the intent? I'm just, I, I need more help with this, thank you.
Mr. Howell.
Again, that is not the intent. We had to set a context within which to operate because there is a state law that would govern if we did not put it in our charter. So the range is there, but in the past, I can point out to you that we have taken the route of amending the bylaws here at town meeting, and it has in fact changed the number of people. We are putting out a, a town bylaw change next year, which is actually joined at the hip with this. It's supposed to actually take the numbers that we had before we made these changes and codify them in the code of the town of Harwich under the bylaws section. There's no intent on changing anything. It's not just an intent, there's a promise. We are not changing anything without the town meeting taking action on it. You have two chances next year. At the town meeting, you'll have a set of bylaws that you can, in fact, adopt, if that's what you choose to do, and you have the opportunity, if somehow, there's something that duplicitous occurs and you don't believe that you've, that we've acted a good faith at this town meeting, you simply don't agree to the charter change next year and negates the action. Also, you've got two guarantees that nothing is going to change. What is going to change is the confusion, where I found myself in a position where I couldn't tell on a particular board how many members they were supposed to have. I had to go back to town meeting actions to see which one came last. We shouldn't be operating like that. Any of you out there should be able to go online and pop up the bylaws and find out exactly what it is, and that's what it says, that's the way we operate. Right now, it's extremely confusing, and you, you do have the ability right now to make a bylaw change that does affect the charter, and that has indeed happened in the past. This is confusing this year, but it won't be by the time we get through next year because then everything will be in one place with the same numbers you see this year.
Any further debate? Yes, sir.
Walter Diggs, Main Street, Harwich, member of the Conservation Commission. I believe this, there needs to be a correction there, I think there are six regulatory boards in the town. The issue permits requires four people to sign a permit, so the three would not work for the Conservation Commission, needs to be four, along with the other regulatory committees.
Town Council, Mr. Giorgio.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. So your zoning bylaw already provides that there will be a zoning Board of Appeals consisting of five members, so this amendment in the charter will not affect the zoning bylaw amendment unless that zoning bylaw is amended at a subsequent, at a subsequent meeting. So the intent here was to provide greater flexibility to establish the size of various boards through a bylaw amendment, which is a much simpler process than going through a charter amendment, and that was the intent. The range of appointments you see in these charter amendments is actually what's permitted in the general laws, but the actual terms of appointment are established and will be established by bylaws. And of course, those have to be approved by town meeting.
Any further debate?
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. Sebula.
I think that lady was standing first.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mrs. Hall.
Sandy Hall, South Harwich. I would like to see if I can try to clear up the confusion by, because I don't think everybody understands exactly how the charter functions. The reason we have a home rule charter is so that we can do things differently from state statute. Now, there are a lot of state statutes that specify the, the membership of all these boards and commissions. If the charter is silent on the numbers that we can appoint, then we have to default to state law. If we specify the numbers that we can appoint, whether it's a single number or a range of numbers, then we can do it our way. What Mr. Howell is telling you is that there have been conflicts between what you see in your bylaws and between what you see in your charter for numbers that have developed over the years. So we need to make our charter wide enough to accommodate what the bylaws say as they might change from time to time. Bylaws are easier to change than the charter. So if the charter says you can have three to five members on a committee, and we now have three, and the town by bylaw wants to make it five, we can just change the bylaw without changing the charter. I hope that helps.
Mrs. Sebula.
I'm just trying to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish here. It's, as Sandy just said, it sounds like we're going to fix the charter so that in the future, when we want to change the number of members of a committee, we change the bylaw because the charter has a range. Is this what you're telling me? I'm just trying to get to the simple answer here, because I'm trying to understand whether I should vote for this or not, because it does sound kind of silly to have a Board of Assessors of one person who then will discuss with him or herself whether or not they should approve something, and that's going to be an entertaining conversation. So I'm just trying to understand that. I'm, I'm concerned about the zoning board. Three members is awfully small for those kind of decisions, so, but that is the mission here of this charter change, is to put ranges in the charter, this is a yes or no question, ranges in the charter so that therefore we can just change the bylaw to be a specific number. Is that a yes or no, that's a yes or no question?
Yes.
Cool.
Any further debate? Mr. McManus.
I guess the genesis of a lot of this, these changes has to do with in part how Harwich came to establish the size of its committees when it adopted its most recent home rule charter, and it changed a whole number of things, how officers were selected. Many, many of these officers that are now appointed were once elected, and, and in those cases, like the Board of Assessors, the three number was passed on to being three appointed. In other committees, whatever number were appointed, continued on. The ranges that are given, if you go through and look at the different committees and compare it with general law, reflect what are allowed in, in general law as a range of appointees for the different types of committees, and so it's sort of bringing the charter in conformance with the range that's allowed by the state. The state does that because there's all sorts of different sized towns. In some towns, it may make sense to have nine members of a Board of Assessors if you've got 700,000 people. In other towns, small towns like Harwich, three is probably a much more appropriate number. But as we've gone forward, we've had problems with some of the numbers of our committees. I know while I was a selectman, we, I went through the arduous task of, of changing the charter and the bylaw to allow combining the Historical Commission and the Historic District Commission, because there simply weren't enough people to volunteer to keep both committees operational, and we went through that process. And it was very confusing, and when all was said and done, we had to go back and change the bylaw one more time because we didn't get it right the first time. So as we enter an era where, quite honestly, there aren't as many folks volunteering to populate the numbers that we have set, the high numbers that we have set for most of our committees, and it becomes necessary to downsize those committees, we need to make that process reasonably easy to do on a year-to-year basis, as opposed to a charter change, which is in essence a two-year process. If you don't, can't fully populate especially a regulatory committee, and you go two years without having enough people to vote. There's a lot of things that become approved just simply because the committee can't take action for lack of volunteers.
I think that's another way to say yes, Mrs. Sebula. Any further debate?
You know, you know me, Mr. Moderator, I, I like the simple answers.
Okay, it looks like we're ready for a vote on Article 38. It does propose, proposed orders of amendment to the charter, so it requires a two-thirds majority to pass, and the motion is accept and adopt the article. All those in favor of the motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. I rule it got the necessary two-thirds majority and passes. Article 39, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from available funds. The sum of $20,000 to help defray the expenses of the Chase Library and the Harwich Port Library, set funds to be expended under the direction of the Chase Library and the Harwich Port Library trustees and act fully thereon. Mr. Brown?
I move this article be accepted and adopted.
I move this article be accepted and adopted. The $20,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion under Article 39 is accept and adopt, and the sum is $20,000 for this purpose. It's from free cash. Any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 40. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to the Howard Chamber of Commerce to promote the town and its businesses and to advance economic development initiatives for and with the town of Howard. Set monies to be used to manage and fulfill year-round visitor residence business information services, promote and market the town, generate and initiate, initiate materials and activities that encourage the establishment growth and sustainability of businesses in Howard, and to implement economic development objectives and activities in partnership with the town. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and the $25,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 40 be accepted and adopted. The sum is $25,000 is proposed to be taken from free cash. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 41. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to supplement the Massachusetts Cultural Council annual allocation for grant awards to artists, performers, and interpretive scientists who bring events to local venues, which enhance the cultural experience of Howard citizens of all ages. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted, and that $3,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's made under Article 41. It's accept and adopt. The sum is $3,000 is proposed to be taken from free cash. Any debate? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 42. See if the town will vote to protect the historic and cultural resource of the town-owned West Howard Schoolhouse by promoting demolition and/or dismantling and/or moving of the building to another part of town or to any other town or to any other state, and to act fully thereon. Do I have a positive motion? Positive motion?
Mr. Moderator, you have a positive motion?
Yes, Mr. Brown. Go ahead. You're welcome up here. You're welcome up here. You can just read that in.
Can I just read it in?
Yes.
This is Article 42, prohibit demolition of the West Howard Schoolhouse. I am your petitioner. I move that this article be accepted and adopted. I'm Sally Urbano from West Harwich.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Mrs. Urbano.
Thank you. I've prepared some thoughts for you on this petition article, but I want to take a moment before I proceed with those. Last evening, I listened to the discussion of the Sacroteck at Harbor. I listened to the lady who spoke of being embarrassed of the conditions, and issues of safety were also raised. I connected with those points because we live with those every day in West Harwich. I want you to drive to West Harwich, park at the schoolhouse, get out of your car, and walk from the Dennisport line to the Herring River Bridge. You will be embarrassed. Dennis has done a great job of fixing up Dennisport, and we are right next to that. But you will be more than embarrassed. You will feel depressed. You will feel the decay. You will see numerous safety concerns, and you will be surprised that our town has not assessed this neglect, and this neglect breeds neglect. For four years, our group, most of whom live within close proximity, see these things on a daily basis. We have put our time, our money, our energy, and our emotional capital into trying to get our message out to the town. We need aggressive and sustained involvement. These citizens petition articles, there will be another one after I do this one, so don't go away, on the schoolhouse are more than just about a well-loved and neglected building. They represent our best hope for beginning a turnaround. Now to the article. Last year at town meeting, there was a proposal put forward that would have put the West Harwich Schoolhouse to use as a maritime museum with classes for the building of small wooden boats. This was through a community preservation project and a manching grant from the state. The project was only narrowly voted down. Very shortly after that vote, the Board of Selectmen put forth another request for proposal, but this time it included demolishing or dismantling, or dismantling the schoolhouse. So in quick, in quick sequence, we go from a narrow vote to preserve to a request that included demolish or dismantle. Happily, no RFP this year was received that included demolishing or dismantling. The purpose of this petition is to emphasize that no historic or cultural asset of the town should ever be demolished or dismantled. A yes vote tonight would help us gain the time we need. You see, this petition article should never have been necessary, and here's why. The town used Community Preservation Act funds for a project on the foundation of the West Harwich Schoolhouse. According to the Community Preservation Act, it appears that a requirement for using those funds is that a historic preservation restriction be placed on the building. This is to protect the investment into the future, both our local investment and that of the state, because there are state funds within the CPC category. This makes sense to me. Think about it for a moment. We require conservation restrictions, and an affordable housing project requires a 30-year restriction. So a yes on this article gives us one year in which to have that restriction put in place without further threats of demolishing. Sometimes our elected officials are putting great energy working out large budgets and all-encompassing projects. Think wastewater. There are times when some in-town government become disconnected to its citizens. In those cases, we have stood together as seven villages to protect those things we value and to get back on the path that we envision. When Hawksnest was threatened, we stood together. When East Harwich was threatened with large growth, and when Pleasant Lake Avenue was threatened, we stood together to effect change. For West Harwich, the schoolhouse is the cornerstone of our village identity. Every revitalization project, every economic development opportunity needs to begin with a symbol, with something that shows forward movement and the support of the town. The schoolhouse will be the vehicle in which to move our degrading village forward. I've been told that this article may only be advisory. Even so, we are able to voice our thoughts to the town tonight, which is the endearing part of the New England town meeting form of government. I hope the message that you take away is that these petition articles, the one following this one, that this can have a great impact for us and with no new appropriation of money. Thank you.
Further debate on the motion, which is to accept and adopt the article? Mr. Kukunis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The previous speaker just mentioned that this article has been deemed a advisory article and has no authority, if you will, to bind the selectmen to follow it. Could someone from either the selectmen or maybe the town council apprise us of that status, please?
I'm advised by the town council before the meeting that this is a sense of the meeting, a resolution, if you will, and non-binding expression of the opinion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to support it. There's a number of reasons why I'm not going to support it. Personally, I don't think that we should be binding the selectmen's hands in any way, fashion, or form on dealing with this particular building. For those of us that have been around long enough know that we've had hundreds of discussions, hundreds of discussions on this particular building. One of them even included moving it to the center of Harwich and putting it where the Duck Caw, thank you, the Crowe Bond is now located, so that, that we would have a cluster, if you will, of historic buildings. There was also, for a long time, a affordable housing unit plan that was proposed for that area, and I'm assuming, I don't, actually, I know, knocking the building down was part of that plan. There was another one where they were going to be renovating part of it and putting some stuff out back. I just think it's ludicrous that we would pass this tonight, even as an advisory stand from us, because we cannot, as we do things like this, I see it as, as being once again a stumbling block, and we do nothing with the building. And that has to stop. That has to stop. And this only ensures that once again, for another year, it's going to sit there and we're going to do nothing with it. And quite frankly, I have a lot of friends and a lot of people that live out in the West Harwich area, and I take issue with the fact that this is stated as being the cornerstone of that village. I have, unfortunately, walked from Dennisport down Route 28 because of vehicles that have either run out of gas, have gotten flats, and because nobody in Harwich would pick me up. And quite frankly, you can't even see this building from, you can barely see it from 28. There's a church in front of it that, that is in quite need of repair, and on the other corner is a privately owned home that, from what I understand, the developer who purchased it has got some plans to do that, too. So this particular building is not, I wouldn't certainly consider it the cornerstone of, of West Harwich, and I assume there's a lot of people that would agree with me. There's a lot of other buildings that, or areas of West Harwich which, which I think kind of state our community. The river itself and the bridge and where the Irish Village is, is a wonderful area. Historic homes there along that area are wonderful. Just vote it down. Thank you.
Mr. Mundry, I believe.
Yes, again, West Harwich resident.
Yes.
I want to thank the petitioner. I sincerely thank you.
Any further debate? Yes, sir.
My name is Duncan Berry. I'm from West Harwich. I just wanted to give a flipside view of what the value of this piece of property is, as well as the structure. It may be, you know, there may be various opinions about the value of it, and those opinions change throughout time, and the, the topic will come and go before various committees. But the fact remains is that this building has been recommended to be on the National Register of Historic Places for 37 years. Since nineteen, for 25 years, it has been part of a regular initiative that only now we're trying to pull together. There are 38 structures between Dennisport and the Herring River. 24 of them tick off all four major criteria. The national, not only the state, but the National Register has expressed an interest. We have several architecture schools that are interested in this. This is not a matter of an opinion about what we've seen come and go. This is a matter of intrinsic cultural interest, historic interest. We have enormous records on this. It's a beautiful building. The idea is to say, we can't replace a, a beautiful building. If you want to tear it down, there are people here that would like to see this actually belong where it is, where, you know, and treated properly. So I would recommend that we support this. Thank you.
Further debate? Yes, Mrs. Urbano.
Am I debating with myself? I don't know.
No, there have been other speakers.
I just wanted to respond, not to this person, but to the other person that talked about the cornerstone, the West Harwich Schoolhouse not a cornerstone. I don't always just make these things up in my head. There are experts who have decided that this is a cornerstone, including the Massachusetts, the Massachusetts Historical Commission and the National Register of Historic Places who came out and visited with us. And its importance is not just the building. It's that it encapsulates the village view, which has been there since 1871. So you have our village morals, I suppose, the church, the cemetery, and the schoolhouse. That's what makes it a cornerstone.
Any further debate? Joan McCartney.
Hi. It may be a cornerstone. I went by because I, I read an article about seeing it from 28, and you have to struggle to see it from 28. We've spent money on a million different things, and I just think that a building that's, you can't even see from the, from the street, is maybe throwing the money good after bad on this project. Thank you.
Mrs. Ford.
Judith Ford. I would like to speak in favor of this article. I think this building has been waiting a long, long time for any small amount of restoration. I think the windows have already been appropriated through the CPC some time back. I think it's a small effort to begin to just seal up this building and make it tight, and then make a plan for it going forward. I don't think we can afford to lose any more historic buildings in this town than we already have, and it's a very important part to keep the historic buildings in their actual villages, and they're, they're irreplaceable.
Any further debate? Looks like you're ready for a vote. The motion under Article 42 is that it be accepted and adopted. All those in favor of the motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I'm going to have to take a standing count. If the tellers are still in the hall, would they come forward, please? Okay, Ellen. Okay, so we're on Article 42, and the motion is to accept and adopt. All those in favor of that motion, please rise and hold up your voter card.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Mr. Brophy? Mr. Evans?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. Ms. McCartney?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
No.
I'm sorry, twenty-eight. Those in opposition to the motion, all those opposed, please rise and be counted. Hold up your voting card.
Eleven.
Eleven. Mr. Brophy?
Ten.
Joan, thirty-three. And Mr. Evans?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. So the total, motion in favor, 109. Those opposed, 70. Motion carries. Article 43. See if the town will vote to direct town administration to complete the wishes of the voters as expressed at the 2007 town meeting to use the existing CPC funding to purchase and install historically accurate windows in the West Harwich Schoolhouse and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown, you don't have a positive motion? Mrs. Urbano.
Mr. Moderator, I have a positive motion.
Okay.
This is, first of all, thank you for the prior vote. This is Article 43, purchase and install historically accurate windows in the West Harwich School by petition. I move that this article be accepted and adopted.
Do I have a second? Okay, the motion's made in second under Article 43. It is that the article be accepted and adopted. Mrs. Urbano.
I'm so happy. In 2007, at a vote of town meeting, community preservation funds were approved to install windows in the Sisson Road Rec Building and the historic West Harwich Schoolhouse. The $32,000 that was allocated for the West Harwich School windows, it's still waiting to be used. The money is unspent and was rededicated to that purpose at last year's town meeting. Remember that this money can only- Remember that this money can only be spent within the historic preservation category. This article asks the Board of Selectmen, through the administrator, to fulfill its responsibility, as already voted upon by town meeting. Does our vote here tonight have meaning, and can we have the reasonable expectation that our town will honor our vote? Install the windows. The neighborhood of West Howard and Captain's Row has been living with a boarded-up, neglected building for 25 years. The involved and concerned citizens, who represent people from various areas of Howard and off Cape, have expended money, time, energy, and heart to advocate for these things that we all need, and that is, a neighborhood that is safe for all its inhabitants, that is pleasant in nature and does not appear so depressed. What other town-owned building sits in a boarded-up condition on a main road through town and in a neighborhood? We could continue to leave the way it is, all boarded up, in which case, no windows will be broken, which apparently is a concern of some. Or, we could just remove the plywood coverings and install the windows with money that has already been appropriated. We could do something, anything, to infuse the neighborhood with hope and a little bit of caring. With a yes vote tonight, it is an easy way to effect change and show a mobilization, show that someone cares for what the town is. As I mentioned, Dennisport has done a recent vitalization, and we now stand in stark contrast. If you drive 28, or even better, walk from Dennisport to Herring River Bridge, you will see for yourself. There are condemned buildings. Bishop's Terrace remains in deplorable condition, especially for such an old and distinguished asset. The church is in need of some work. Their siding is falling off, and underneath there are some newly exposed areas. Several of the drinking and food establishments are struggling, and two businesses have recently moved on. Private investment will not be available until some positive movement is seen. It's the eyes of the mirror to the soul in a human being, and the windows of a building are the reflection of the community in which the structure dwells. Ours reflect nothing. It's all boarded up. We are currently not doing so well. We ask that you join with us in a yes vote and help us start the work towards a healthier West Howard. We are the seven, but we are the one. Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion? Mrs. Corbett?
Since this vote was cast 10 years ago, I would like to inquire, who has assessed the structural integrity of the building? I don't mean to give, for you to give me the name of the company, but I do want to know-
I couldn't anyway, Mrs. Corbett.
No. I don't want, I just want to know the professional level, whether it was a volunteer or whether it was an engineer. So I'm concerned about the integrity of the building to accept these new windows after this long delay.
I see Mr. McCready is up. Are you able to address it? He's the chairman of the CPC committee. Do you have any information about the current structural condition of the building and its ability to accept the windows?
I can't. I was up to address, to address the specific petition, but I think Mr. Urbano may be able to.
Mr. Urbano, can you address the question from Mrs. Corbett about the structural integrity of the building?
Yes, I can. Last year, I was the person that turned in the use for the building to have it a museum and boat building. In that process of putting together a plan, and that plan still exists in our town library, both our town engineering as well as other experts looked at the building and found it sound. Our engineer said it was one of the better buildings in town. I've walked into that building. It is dirty, but it is sound. It doesn't creak as much as the floors in my own house, which was built in the 1800s. So I can't give you the names, other than you can call our engineering department. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mrs. Corbett? Okay. So, Mr. McCready, you were going to speak with respect to CPC?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to really go through a reminder briefly of last year. The article to restore the building that was just barely voted down, there was a companion article at the time, which was then, assuming the first one passed, would have rescinded the remain, this window section, the $32,000 that Mrs. Urbano refers to. We then, once the restoration article was voted down, we did not, we voted down the rescension article to make sure that this money was still available, and that is the money that is being discussed in the petitioner's article. Thank you.
So just so the voters are aware, the CPC committee's previous approval of this, these funds has not been rescinded?
That is exactly correct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In a strange twist of fate here, I was the vice chair of the West Howard School Building Committee in 1996, and-
You're raging yourself, Mr. Howell.
I was 14. In any event, we went through these issues, and I want to make it clear, I have a deep affection for the history of the town of Howard, and for that building particularly. But in saying that, during that period of time, we held a lot of hearings, we had an open house, and when that building was even occupied, it had an egregious history of vandalism. There were steel cages over the windows, and yet, all the windows kept getting broken. I have no problem whatsoever in purchasing the windows and securing them somewhere in anticipation of occupying this building, but to actually talk about mandating installing those windows is akin to you deciding that you are going to put replacement windows in your house four days before an impending hurricane. There is nothing that can assure us that those windows will stay in place for even six months. I would love to see this building upgraded. I would love to see it occupied in some historic manner, and I would love the whole area to be built up. The biggest problem I have is, buy the windows, but please don't install them until you can assure yourself that they'll stay there.
Further debate? Mrs. Urbano.
Just two points. Because we do think about all these things when we're putting these together. First of all, the lady that asked about the building's sturdiness, it was coastal engineering that did the original assessment of the building. Two things: there are no guarantees in life, and second, there are many buildings that are not doing very well, but their windows are not being broken in. And the third thing is, I think it was maybe six months ago, that the chief of police came to the Board of Selectmen and said, "West Howard has no more difficult problems than the rest of Howard." Thank you.
Mr. Kukunas.
Well, we can definitely be assured that the windows won't get broken if we don't put them in, so, number one. Number two, one of the reasons why maybe the kids aren't hanging around that building breaking windows now as they did when Mr. Howell was 14, is because the windows are boarded up. The selectmen finally are doing the right thing with your money. They're not spending it foolishly. These last two articles that we talked about, I have a kind of a problem with them in form anyhow. The both petitioner, or I should say, the petitioners basically were the same ones that were here last year that asked you to give them the building and give them $800,000 to renovate the building through CPC funds, and by the way, circumventing the capital plan, which is my, this year's pet peeve, putting it in for three years, having never been in it before. It got turned down by an hour margin last year, so now they've cleverly come up with this new method. First of all, asking you not to knock the building down, and now they're asking you to go ahead and spend the $30,000 that we've allocated to put the windows in it. So I'm sure that they'll probably be back relatively soon answering the RFP that's out there, which they have the right to do by the procurement laws, but now the building's going to have the windows installed in it. It'll be one less thing that they have to worry about. This is actually the wrong way to go about it. As you know, when I stand up the mic, and most of you all know me as a farmer, and I am very proud of that fact, but in a previous life, I was a structural engineer. I had a company in the city and did quite a bit of rehab work. And I will tell you that it's basic knowledge. You do not put your finished windows into a building when you have even a question of structural problems, or when you have no idea what you're going to do with the building. It's just absolutely silly. So, you know, I would ask you again, please, protect your money. It's not going anywhere. As the gentleman said, it's still put aside in the CPC funds. And if, in fact, the Urbanos come forward, or any other person comes forward and asks to get this building through a long-term lease, I kind of hope Ms. Ford, when she's done with the church, will come over and take this on.
It's a meeting house, Leo.
Yeah, the meeting house, thank you. Because she's done such a wonderful job with that. Then we, the money's allocated. It's there. They put the windows in. They don't have to come back and ask permission. It's already been done. This is a silly article. It's asking you to force the selectmen to put windows in a vacant building that, by the way, is in very kind of a remote area. And I'll take a gamble on that. I bet you it'll be broken before the summer.
Yes, ma'am.
Alice Kelly from Osprey Lane.
Yes, Alice.
I think the people who have been working on this schoolhouse, which I really love myself, and I love to see it when I go by it, have been working their hearts to the bone, if you can mix a metaphor, to try and get things started so that this can begin to be revived and refreshed and made whole again. I noticed that during the summer, there are many people in the Cape who come down here and enjoy their houses, and when they go home for the winter, they board up their windows to make sure they're okay when nobody's living there. And it doesn't, I'm not a construction person like Mr. Kukunas, but I do know that it seems like a sensible idea, in order to be able to get the project started, to put the windows in, put the boards back over them for the time being while they're trying to get a look at what they're going to do with it next, so that there's a clear, symbolic as well as literal movement forward to recreating that, the life of that little schoolhouse. It makes me very sad to see how hard these people are working and how cynical people are about the energy that they've been putting into it.
Any further debate? Mr. Urbano.
I apologize for being up here. I'd committed since I have a petition article. I was not going to do this, but I do have to correct the record. Last year, when I put the petition article in, had that become a maritime museum? It was a volunteer effort. I asked for $216,000, I believe, in CPC funds. It went through diligent scrutiny through CPC, and CPC approved it. The rest of the funds were to come, 50% of that, from a state grant. Someone in this room called the state and misrepresented our group and said that there was no support for the schoolhouse, that the support was for the Judah Chase House. They misrepresented, the state did not give us that grant. That is for the record. The windows? You know what? Sure. Let's get them and let's put them in a room somewhere. Let's keep the cash. That doesn't make any sense either. If we want to fix something, you start. Sally said, my wife, there's two buildings there that are condemned. Drive by afterwards and see if we're telling the truth. The windows aren't broken. And maybe some of the windows will be broken if we put them in at the schoolhouse, but nothing says that maybe a volunteer effort won't fix them again, or come up with the money. We didn't ask the town for money to put together a video on Captain's Row. We did it with private funds. The neighbors got together and put together the money. We've done that over and over in all our efforts. This is a town-owned building. It's kind of foolish for us to throw our own cash into fixing a town-owned building. When my wife said it's an embarrassment, it is an embarrassment. All you need to do is please park your car there and say the town owns that. I and my wife do not live within view of that building, but we care for it. Thank you.
Further debate? Mrs. Goldsmith.
Yes, I'd like to speak just to the reasoning that was presented in the speaking, in the presentation of this article. Whether people vote this up or down tonight, I would like to express a dream that the next time we talk about West Howard at town meeting, it's clear that we have historic preservationist visionaries amongst us. I'm waiting for the economic development creative visionaries to come forward in the town and the town of Howard with a vision of economic development for West Howard, because when we talk about going from that lovely section of Dennisport that used to be a hot mess, and then it's a nightmare coming to West Howard, it's not historic preservation that we are all gaga over that little part of Dennisport now. It is a fabulous economically-developed area that people like to go to because of the great shops that are there, and whatever the town did to attract businesses to come and thrive there, I'd like to see that integrated into the vision for West Howard. So I just wanted to speak to that and put that out to the meeting. I think that's what's made that a very vital part of Dennisport, and I'd love to see a piece of that in West Howard, as well as historic preservation. Thank you.
Anything further on Article 43? Just on the windows. Mr. Kukunas, you have something further?
I just want to correct Mr. Urbano. He just mentioned that there are-
We're not going to go back and forth over the last-
I understand that.
Wait a minute, Mr. Kukunas. We're not going to go back and forth over last year's presentation and article.
I'm not-
I want to stick with this one, which is the windows for the West Howard School.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I mean, Mr. Moderator. I will keep it to the windows.
Okay, thanks.
It was mentioned by a previous speaker that there are no broken windows on the two vacant buildings which rejoins to this. That is absolutely untrue. The property on the corner, on the opposite side of the church, doesn't have one door on it. They are ripped off. And on the backside of the building, there is not one full pane of glass. And I just wanted to correct that for the record.
Mr. Urbano, I'll give you, as long as you stay within the confines of the motion on
Answer the question. The town, whether you vote for or against it, see for yourselves. Go by and walk and count and see, and see where the damage was caused and what caused the damage. But we all have eyes. Thank you.
Looks like you're ready for a vote on Article 43. The motion before you is that the article be accepted and adopted. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no?
No.
The motion does not carry. Article 44. I'm going to step back on Article 44, and Mr. Crowell, William Crowell, has volunteered as a temporary moderator for Article 44.
Good evening. Article 44. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds free cash flow, or borrow a sufficient sum of money to fund architectural and engineering plans to retain the Howard Middle School for development as a town-owned, affordable and/or senior housing facility managed either internally or by an outside agency, and to act fully thereon. The appropriation authorized by this vote shall not take effect until the town is exempt from the limitation on the total taxes imposed by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2 1/2. The amounts required to pay the principal and any interest on any borrowing authorized under this article and further authorized- under this article and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept any state, federal, or private grant monies for this purpose. Is there a positive motion on this article?
I move this article be accepted.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, this article be accepted and adopted. Mr. Urbano.
Should I read this? It's not a proper motion without a funding source and an amount of money, but you want a contingent on the property. So you should put a proper motion on the floor. Then help me put a proper motion on the floor. Okay. So what is the funding source? The funding source is going to be- It's probably going to have to be borrowed. Okay, all right. And how much money? $65,000.
We're going to take a minute to amend the motion to identify a funding source and an amount to be raised and appropriated.
Now you're going to assess me and get glasses so I can read. So it's going to require a two-thirds vote? Okay, so it's going to be contingent. It has to be contingent, it's mine. Okay. But, okay. Before you can read this debt exclusion vote. Okay? So- Amendment? No, no, it's going to be the main motion. So it's, I move that this article be accepted and adopted, and that the amount of $65,000 be borrowed for this purpose contingent on the passage of Proposition 2 1/2 debt exclusion vote. That's okay. So the selectmen, if this passes- The selectmen have the right. The selectmen would have to call a special election to be held no later than September 15th. Otherwise, the appropriation goes. Bye.
I'm going to allow Mr. Urbano to reread the main motion. Go ahead, Mr. Urbano.
I move that this article be adopted and accepted, and that the amount of $65,000 be borrowed for the purpose contingent on the passage of a Proposition 2 1/2 debt exclusion vote.
Is there a second to that? Let me have that.
Okay, you've got it.
It's been moved and seconded to accept and adopt the article, and that the amount of $65,000 be borrowed for this purpose contingent on the passage of a Proposition 2 1/2 debt exclusion vote, which I am informed by town council must take place by order of the Board of Selectmen by September 15, 2017. Is there any debate on this motion?
No, I need to speak.
Mr. Urbano, I'll let you go first.
Thank you. I don't know whether to be happy or sad that the windows didn't get put in. I have to go home tonight. And if this doesn't get voted, and hers would have been voted in, two of them, I'd have been in some serious problems. So, don't know. But the purpose of putting this petition together first is to have a plan in place should a taxpayer-funded, two-year cultural experiment not work. And secondly, to stimulate a discussion on the middle school and its use. The reason I chose housing is because last year, the Board of Selectmen asked the taxpayers through a non-binding referendum to choose from four options. Either to have it become a cultural center, to tear it down, move Town Hall to that building, or sell it to a private developer for housing. The vote was overwhelmingly in favor of housing. Take a second. Think back to when you voted for this non-binding resolution. No matter which choice you voted for, what were your expectations? It may have been differed for each one of us. To me, it was a gentleman's agreement that the vote mattered. Yet decision was made to disregard the outcome of the vote. Why did we go through the exercise? If no action would be taken on the most popular outcome, one might expect at least a study would have been commissioned as to determine the pros or cons of doing what the taxpayers wanted and voted for. Instead, we had moved to an experiment to use the cultural, to use the building as a cultural center. The issue I have with the cultural center idea is simple. There seems to be no plan other than to do whatever we can to rent the space. That's not a plan. I would hope that if nothing comes out of this petition, at least those advocating for the use of the building as a cultural center would be urged to bring the taxpayers, the taxpayers, a plan that we can all see. The experiment does have a cost. And according to some in Town Hall, even if fully rented after two years, it will cost the taxpayers $100,000 per month, 1.2 million per year. And that's before any renovation. And that does not include any renovation cost. Now, if someone else has different numbers, these are what I were given, I would love to see a plan. This is what, this is why a plan is needed. It might address the following questions. What will it cost taxpayers should we continue to pursue the cultural center after the two-year trial? How long will we need to subsidize the artists and others using the building? Will improvements be necessary to the building when the two-year experiment is over, and at what cost? What determines success and failure? And now, let's get back to the petition before us. Let's answer some questions concerning this petition. What does it do? Well, first, it does not mandate the use of the building for housing by this vote. It does not stop the cultural center experiment. It doesn't stop those who may be advocating for moving Town Hall. It does not advocate for tearing down the middle school. And by the way, should a plan come forward to do so, which could be a result after the two years, if nothing happens, there is a mini sewage plant there that can handle up to 50 homes. It does not stop us from selling the building to a private developer. What does it do? It develops a plan to evaluate the potential and associated costs with converting the middle school to housing, to determine what benefits might exist from a town-owned housing project as opposed to a private developer. The question is, where does the $65,000 come from? First, if the money can't be found, or if there's no appetite to find it, then the petition has served its purpose. It has questioned the disconnect between the vote taken and the actions taken by our elected officials in defiance of the vote. Yes, it will take time to find the money. In reality, the money can be found. If the will exists, it can come from CPC funds or from the Affordable Housing Fund. Yes, there are problems with both. Yes, it takes time for CPC funds. Yes, there is a process. Yes, we don't have money in the housing fund, but there are ways, and the selectmen have proven that. I leave that to the BOS, Board of Selectmen, to figure out if a positive vote is passed for this petition. Of course, maybe if we just ask a few common sense questions, the answer might be evident. How do other towns use old school buildings such as ours? Interesting fact, 90% are used for housing. If we use common sense and ask from a financial perspective, which is the least burdensome to taxpayers? The answer came from last year's vote: housing. I thank you and ask for a positive vote. But more than that, I thank you for the opportunity to speak to my fellow neighbors. Thank you.
Before we proceed, I want to point out that this article is simply an article to raise and appropriate by borrowing the sum of $65,000 for architectural and engineering plans. That's the gist of the article. And since it involves borrowing, it will require a two-thirds vote this evening. Further debate? Yes, sir.
My understanding is that this is a request for a feasibility study? The $65,000?
No. As I just stated, it's to fund architectural and engineering plans to retain the middle, the Harwich Middle School for development as a town-owned affordable and/or senior housing facility, as stated in the article.
The way I understand that is those plans would determine whether or not that structure is suitable, feasible, for affordable or senior housing. Correct?
That may be your understanding, but that's not how I'm reading the article. It's to fund the plans, the development of the plans.
I don't have a problem with the Harwich Middle School being used for affordable housing, senior housing. The problem that I have is that the Board has asked, or has already committed, to certain leases, I believe, two-year leases for rentals for artists and others who are already occupying the building. Is that true?
I have to ask the Board of Selectmen. Janelle Brown from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. That is untrue. It is one year. At this point, we are not going beyond one year, and some of the leases are actually six months.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's a number of different things that are going through my head with this. I do agree with Mr. Urbano, in essence, that we have to start moving on creating a plan here, but there's at least four things I want to say. The first is, the town is a landlord. That's all I'm going to say. Just ponder that. The town is a landlord. Aside from the fact that you're not going to get any property taxes out of that, the town would be running this building? The his, I also want to point out, because this is confusing to me. We've had a long discussion about the town's history. How many here understand that before it was a middle school, it was Harwich High School? So if we value history, we value history. I mean, it seems like we're picking and choosing from a menu here. As to the ballot, I do have some personal observations. I was working as a poll worker that day. You have no idea of how many people came out of, came into that place and said, "How do I vote on this?" This was not four choices, where pick one. This was, you had to pick an amalgam of choices in rank order, and it was impossible to understand it. So I'm not sure what the result meant. It was kind of like taking an SAT test without knowing what they were, how they were asking it and how they were going to grade it. I'm not sure what that result meant in the end, because there were too many people that were coming into that, in the polling place and saying, "How do I fill this ballot out coherently? What does this mean?" We are not permitted to make that comment. We hand a ballot out, and it's up to you to fill it out. So bear that in mind as you're contemplating the building. Now, I've been an advocate of affordable housing for over 25 years. I obviously know problems with affordable housing, period, but this is just the wrong way of approaching this right now. The selectmen have already embarked on a process where they're assessing Alborough Houses' value, to possibly sell that. I would love us to come up with a coherent plan that has an inventory of the middle school, which, by the way, I bring my nine-year-old that we're guardians for, pass every morning because that's where pickup and drop-off goes for the elementary school. If there's a coherent plan that's developed looking at Harwich Town Hall, which, by the way, is two years older than the refurbished middle school, and the Alborough House, and the middle school, and look at the totality of what we need in this town over the next 10 or 20 years, and then figure out, well, this is the place where we're going to do the affordable housing. This is the building we're going to sell, and this is the building we're going to move into as, say, a municipal complex. That would make a lot more sense, other than having 200 people sitting here trying to make sense of the end result for this building. This just is the wrong process, and Mr. Urbano's right. We need to get off of this and get into a process that has some result at the end, but I don't think this is the place that that should be done.
Further debate? Mrs. Sebula.
First off, just a comment. I believe that non-binding referendum vote was quite clear last year. It said, "Pick one." You had four choices, it said, "Pick one." I don't think anybody should have been confused by that. I'm rising to speak in support of this article. Even though it calls for a study, the article has not been proposed for funding by Town Administration, Board of Selectmen, nor the Finance Committee. However, a positive vote tonight would allow at least for the seeking of grant monies by the proponents in the town, and therefore allow for the completion of the article's purpose. At the May 2016 annual town election, a ballot question asked our residents to vote on the possible uses for this property. Although non-binding, those town residents who chose to vote, elected by a wide margin to use the property for housing, and voted decisively not to spend money on moving Town Hall or creating another community center. Currently, town government, by allowing rentals and other uses of the property, is creating a de facto second community center, and saying that there needs to be a two-year study for use as an artist colony or a cultural center. That ballot question for a privately operated cultural community center, not run by the town and certainly not on the taxpayers' backs, only received a modest number of votes. The town administration has not provided any funding in any budget to do any study, so any assessment put forth will be based on anecdotal stories and not based on factual information. And speaking of the taxpayers' burdens, once again, town government requested yet another $125,000 for middle school expenses, and we all voted for that through Article 10. Based on the recently adopted and updated housing production plan, there is a significant need for year-round rental housing on the Cape and certainly in Harwich. I have heard that business owners are finding it hard to fill full-time jobs because people cannot find a place to live. And there has been news article after news article about the younger folk leaving the Cape due to lack of available housing. They cannot afford to start out on their adult lives in their hometowns because they can't have a place to live. And how about our veterans and our seniors? As you ponder your vote this evening, I also ask you to consider why town government is ignoring the people's voice, the people who chose to vote. I ask that you vote to support this article. Thank you.
I'm going to recognize Mr. McCaskill, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Bear with me. To the comments about ignoring the people's vote, I think the words "non-binding" stick out in my head. We were looking for input from the public. We also did two years' worth of middle school repurpose committees. Two years, and as Ms. Sebula just spoke, she appointed the committee for the, for both of them. Both of those committees came back with, "Housing is not an option," or at least the last option. The second middle school repurpose committee, which I sat on, for full disclosure, came up with a concept and required, or wanted the town to explore all other options and made housing last. And it was to also encourage consolidation. So looking at things like the Alborough House, looking at things like the old wrecked building, looking at things like- building, looking at things like Town Hall, and the expansion of the rec programs, which I see Mr. Brackett up here, he's going to speak towards some of the rec programs, housing was always the last. So, for these people speaking for this, to say that we're ignoring the public, we had two years' worth of committees, and this overwhelming housing option wasn't that overwhelming. We had moving Town Hall, we had use of cultural center. If you add up the people that wanted to keep it, it was actually defeated by a very narrow margin. So, we looked at the narrow margin that that was beaten by. We looked at the two years' worth of middle school repurpose committee, where five people sat on, put out RFPs, looked for uses, and housing was the last. To Mr. Urbano's point, how long do we subsidize this? Well, we've asked for two years. We've asked for two years to get actual data on what we can do with that school. We never said we wouldn't explore housing. Now, let's talk about housing. We had two RFI's went out for housing. We had a sixty-five unit Stratford Capital project proposed, sixty-five units. So, not only encompassed the seventy-four thousand square foot building, they also wanted to put four outbuildings. So, they wanted to add to that property. Now, anyone that's driven by that school at parent pickup time realizes that when that middle school and elementary school shared a property, they share a driveway. So, now, to keep the cars off of Sisson Road, they've created a double lane so that the parents can pick the children up. And it still stretches out to Sisson Road, but at least we've gotten the traffic off of it. The lot was built as a school lot. The elementary school, if you drive by it in the afternoon, the cars are stacked up out front. They cross the crosswalk, and they park on the grass. They're then backing out into the street. So, we had the town planner do some sketches on what he could possibly do with traffic flow. We never went to the owners of the houses on Parallel Street and said that the cars are going to stack up there. We never explored what we're going to do on Sisson Road, and one of the answers was, well, we'll make the parents wait until all the buses leave to pick their kids up. This isn't something the Board of Selectmen is just ignoring. We have spent a tremendous amount of time on this. We are listening, but we're listening to every piece of this. The second housing option that we got was from a private housing person that does senior housing, and that was ours, the Board of Selectmen wanted to see senior housing in there. We came in with a proposal that was seventy-five percent market rate, twenty-five percent affordable, and maybe Linda can correct me if I'm wrong, because she was part of this. And then, it was plus their living fees. So, affordable? The affordability of it ended up being, so it was higher than most mortgages. It was not affordable at all. Those were the only two housing options we had. Now, before you tonight, we're being asked to spend sixty-five thousand dollars to plan. In order to put the density that they want to have in this for housing, it has to be a forty-B project, and I keep hearing the words "local preference." Well, if you look into local preference, the people that fill out the applications, if we have forty units, it doesn't mean if we turn in forty units that they're going to pick those forty people. The building is now almost rented on one floor. The basement, the old shop, has been rented. The gymnasium, I think, is booked for the year. Carolyn from the community center is also renting part of the cafeteria. So, we're getting the data. We're getting the data that we said we were going to get you, and the building is being used, and it's providing an income. Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year is the line item on this for the budget. We have never spent the line item on the budget. We've never actually gone into it. The wastewater system that Mr. Urbano just spoke of, he spoke that it will cover fifty units. It only takes thirty-five percent of the nitrogen out of it, and your largest cost to that school is that wastewater system, which costs about forty thousand dollars a year. So, I ask you to give the Board of Selectmen a little bit of latitude here whilst we create data for you. We've provided an income source so that we're going to offset some of the costs, but the housing thing that we're speaking of, and tonight's article, is for sixty-five thousand dollars to make it town-owned. Now, one number that was thrown out last night was nine and a half million, and that was to turn it into a Town Hall. What will it cost the taxpayers to make that town-owned housing? To turn that into town-owned housing, what will it cost the town? I think that there's a lot of unanswered questions here, and the proponents of this, Lou Urbano put a number out of a hundred thousand dollars per month. Lou, could you please clarify to the taxpayers here what the hundred thousand dollars a month, where that comes from?
You want him to answer that question?
Please, through you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Urbano.
The hundred thousand dollars first, this is after two years, when it's fully rented. Where it comes from is to your employees at the town. So, it didn't come from me, but if one eval-
Can I just ask the question again? You said that it was going to cost a hundred thousand dollars a month-
Correct.
-total of one point two million. To use that as a cultural center, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And where did that number come from?
It came from a town official, which, if I mentioned his name or her name, could you imagine what will happen? So, I ask this. Maybe you could ask her a question for me.
We're not going to get into a debate here, Mr. Urbano.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. He asked, he made a statement to everybody in this room, and now he's saying it came from a town official. That has never been discussed in a selectman's meeting. This is all public record. The middle school repurpose committees, their files are this thick. We're not hiding any information. It's there. I would ask that he answer the question.
Mr. Urbano, do you have an answer to that question?
I am not willing to have someone lose their jobs by answering it.
Thank you. Further debate? Yes, sir. Your name?
Simon Evans, Panorama Point. A couple of quick things. First of all, to Mr. McCaskill's point, I think it's fair to say, for those of us that attended or took part in the ballot, that there was one ballot-
Step up to the microphone.
Yeah, there was one ballot question for housing. There were three, four things that were not housing, and I believe the answer is that not housing won. With respect to the cultural center itself, I think what we're doing with it is a great idea. I do think we can go further, and I do agree with Mr. Howell when he talked about the development of a plan. One of the simple things that I would love to see there would be actually porting through using Open Cape internet access into that building. I actually, when I saw this, I own a business, and when I reached out to one of the selectmen about what was happening with the leasing of the property, I was curious to see whether it would make sense as a potential office location, and I found out there's no internet connection, which obviously made it, in this day and age, pretty impractical. So, there are things that we could do. When you think about the number of summer visitors that come down to this area who are professionals, lawyers, accountants, whatever, they often are going to be conducting business while they're staying down here to provide an opportunity in that building for a type of WeWork solution where people can lease space to do video conferencing, other opportunities like that. People will pay a premium for those sorts of services. There's an awful lot we could do with that, and it's far more effective and revenue promising than the concept of turning the town into a landlord. Thank you.
Now, just a reminder again of what the article proposes. It is not suggesting another non-binding sense-of-the-body referendum this evening for a lengthy debate. So, I'm going to ask that the speakers focus their comments on what the article asks to do, which is to raise and appropriate sixty-five thousand dollars by borrowing to fund architectural and engineering plans for an affordable/s senior housing project. Mr. Kukounis.
Thank you, Mr. Temporary Moderator. Thank you for bringing us back on topic, because that's exactly what I want to do. What's in front of you, what we've spent the last two days on, and quite reluctantly, and I didn't support all of them, but we now have a ballot that we're going to be going out for in about two weeks with fourteen ballot overrides, yet again spending more of our tax dollars. If we pass this particular article, it's asking the selectmen to put together a special ballot on or before September fifteenth, where we'll all have to go out to the ballot and yet again take another vote to raise our taxes. And then, if I may just sneak one in to remind you, we'll all be back at the ballot again to raise our taxes for the tech school sometime in the fall. So, I would ask that, first of all, I'm absolutely not in support of this. I think it's an end-run, wrong way to do any kind of planning whatsoever. And for all of you that have been here, and for all of you that have voted these kinds of things, when did you ever see us spend sixty-two thousand dollars to plan anything? I mean, come on. Sixty-two thousand dollars to put together a plan on that huge building to see if it's feasible to put housing? Anybody knows that that's going to cost over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. I mean, it's just, we've never spent sixty-two thousand dollars on planning anything. And the only thing I want to say in closing is really a thank you to Carolyn, who's done a wonderful job here today to set all this up for us, but it was also stepped up to the plate and is doing a wonderful job in maintaining the middle school also. Thank you. Let's just support the selectmen and let them move forward and investigate the proper use. And I am going to sneak in, I'm an advocate for the Town Hall going there.
Mr. Brackett.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Bob Brackett, speaking on behalf of the Howard's Police Soccer Club, and I am a non-resident, so looking for permission to carry on.
Any objection to Mr. Brackett speaking this evening? Hearing none. Go ahead, Mr. Brackett.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. I would like to say that I'm speaking on behalf of the Howard's Police Soccer Club, and just so, for those of you that do not know, we are a community-based program designed to grow and develop the game of soccer in partnership with the youth in our community. Funny, over two nights, we haven't heard the word "youth" much at all. What I'd like to say is, I started that program several years ago, and we started right here in this facility, right here, because it was the only gymnasium available in the town of Howard's. And when I tried to start that, I met with Carolyn Carey, and unfortunately, I found out that this gymnasium was booked solid. And thank you to her cooperation and the custodian staff here. They were able to squeeze me in for forty-five minutes, very early, early, early in the morning, much to the chagrin of the children, so we could play here prior to the rec program starting up. Since then, the town was able to take possession of the Howard's Middle School, which has a gymnasium, a much-valued asset for the town. Since then, we've been allowed access to use the gymnasium, and our program has grown to one-hundred-and-twenty-five children over the past couple of years. We play our games there. We work out of that program. We play footsall every Saturday morning through the winter. We have one-hundred-and-twenty-five kids that play there, and we have their families, their relatives, their friends, and their siblings there every Saturday morning to the two to three hundred people that go through there. We would not be able to have that program. We have currently grades three to nine, and we would love to be able to further expand that program. We would not be able to do that if it was not for the cooperation of the Board of Selectmen, who I would like to publicly commend and thank on that, and I would also be remiss if I did not publicly commend and thank Carolyn Carey and Eric Beebe from the rec department. Together, they recognize the importance of that facility and being able to provide an opportunity and a place for our youth to be able to congregate in safe activity. Maybe that's why windows aren't getting broken in town. If it were not for the availability of that gymnasium at the Howard's Middle School, we would not have my program. The program would just flat-out not exist. The program we run, we run it free of charge. It's donation-based. If we did not have that gymnasium, we would not have our program, period. The only other gymnasiums that are available in town are owned by the schools. The community center and the middle school are the only gymnasiums that are available. The schools are the only ones that own the rest. We happen to use one of the school gyms for our last weekend. It costs us eight hundred dollars for the day. We certainly would not be able to run any sort of program that would be conducive to our philosophies of providing free, healthy activities for our children if we had to pay eight hundred dollars a day. The availability of that gym is utmost importance to this town, and it's not only the gymnasium, but it is also the auditorium that provides all kinds of opportunities for our youth. It's not just for sports, but our kids that are involved in arts, theater, all other activities that keep them engaged in our community. The opportunity of having the availability for that middle school gym has allowed our rec department to be able to expand their programs and to be able to offer far more activities for, again, I'm going to say it, the youth in our community. Over the last two nights, we have appropriated an awful lot of money in this town. I like to see it. I like to see the town vibrant. I like to see the town spend. I want to ask you again, how many articles and how much of that money had to do with the youth? I said it again, the youth in our community. Crickets. Okay? It is imperative for the town, I believe our friend Leo over here was one that said it, one of the goals of the town, very profound statement, Leo, one of the goals of the town and one of the purposes of the town is to provide services, services to the town subsidized by taxes, of course, but to provide services. That is a service to have that. That is an asset of that town. That would be a tremendous disservice to this community if we were to lose that. Okay? It is imperative for the town to provide facilities and support for our youth activities. The stronger a community supports its youth, the better retention you'll have for families to not only stay residing in our town, but also to stay in our town's schools and to not opt out to other schools and other communities that are providing for their youth in their town. I hate to see all the time, and I hate to make this all about sports, but that's what we're talking about. I hate to see our young kids opt out of the Monomoy District and opt out of our schools for other communities and other school districts, because those communities are supporting those youth programs from the lowest of levels, and they are drawing their kids out of our district. I hate to see that. I hate to see us lose our kids, and what usually follows that is the families then also move out of town.
So, Mr. Brackett, is it fair to assume you're not in favor of this article?
I am not in favor of this article, and, Mr. Moderator, I'm picking up what you're laying down. I will go.
This is Ford.
Yes, I'm Judith Ford. I would like to speak in opposition to this article. While I'm usually up here on preservation and restoration articles in the town, I think I feel strongly about this almost more than any vote that we've ever had to make in the town of Howard's. I've been a strong opponent of housing at that elementary school location. I was at meetings for the last two repurpose committees, and I strongly feel that affordable housing, or any kind of housing at that site, would squeeze, congest, and therefore compromise our elementary school environment. I would like to begin by correcting what I feel is misleading information in the printed explanation with this article. First, I believe the medical school is neither unwanted nor unused. Second, the two selectmen-appointed middle school repurpose committees, who met over a period of years, both determined that housing was not a workable option at that site. I attended the latter meetings of the first committee and all of the meetings of the last one. The first committee voted it down, and the second rated it only as a very last resort. Major concerns for both committees were traffic, parking, and school safety. Third, I believe our Board of Selectmen are to be commended for taking the necessary time to make sure we fully understand the viable options for the future of this valuable town asset. By today's standards for a safe school environment, we need only drive by our new Monomoy High School to see the vast surrounding environment. Many schools now are even establishing safe zones around existing school properties. By comparison, our elementary school is the largest elementary school on the smallest piece of land on Cape Cod. Over the years, this has been minimized by close proximity to the active Howard's Middle School. This currently-developed property is already struggling with highly inadequate parking and inadequate playground as well. and inadequate playground as well. The middle school itself is closely sandwiched in between the elementary school, two baseball fields, and our school playground. Two years ago, our elementary school was already at full capacity, and now it is over its student capacity, likely requiring additional construction of school wings and the busing of numbers of elementary school children who live in Howard to chat 'em. High-density family housing at this site could potentially result in sizable additions to our school budget, if not new school, new school construction. We need only to look at, um, what's going on in our country with schools to understand the importance of protecting our youngest citizens. We should be guided by our previous chief of police also, who submitted a letter to the repurpose committee stating that his professional recommendation was against creating any kind of housing on this middle school property with such proximity to the elementary school. Knowing our current elementary school's safety policies require protection of locked doors, screening all visitors before school entrance is allowed, I cannot imagine how we could even consider a high-density housing development in a middle school building that is only 180 feet from our elementary school, less than 80 feet from our school playground, and less than 60 feet from our children's ball field behind the building. Many vacant school buildings have been appropriately repurposed to provide for needing housing development, but never while an active school is still in operation on the site. The addition of a high-density housing development would likely require increased costs for town services. We would need to consider this also as additional wastewater, as we plan for our critical wastewater treatment plan. I also don't believe that any plan has been recorded to establish how this property would be, or even could be, divided. I believe our elementary school environment should be our greatest priority as we work to develop this valuable town building into a useful and enriching center for all our Howard community, and retain this property as a tremendous asset toward any future town need. Please join me in supporting the guidance of our Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee and turn down this article.
Yes, sir, Mr. Weiser.
Excuse me, sir.
I'll be very brief. One of the many hats I wear, as most of us do here in Howard, um, one of my hats is that I'm the music director of the Howard Cranberry Festival. And in keeping with the, uh, the Board of Selectmen's efforts to explore the cultural center option, uh, I'm presenting a concert at the middle school auditorium on Sunday evening. I'd like you all to come and see whether it's a viable venue for a jazz concert and, uh, contribute to the process of figuring out what we're gonna do with that property in the future. I'm opposed to the allocation of the $65,000 by this petition proposal, uh, not only for the reasons that have already been proposed by others, but also the fact that the amount of money being unreasonable, the cost of a special election in order to vote on that would be a substantial one to the town as well, that we don't need to absorb for this purpose. If it turns out that this option becomes a viable option, even though all of the other studies have suggested that it's not going to be, then the Board of Selectmen is more than well-equipped to figure out where the planning funds are gonna come from and put that before us in a future town meeting. So I hope you'll come to the concert at the former middle school, now the Howard Cultural Center, on Sunday evening, May 7th, 7:30 PM.
I will reiterate that, as, uh, Mr. Weiser pointed out, that this article, if you pass it by a two-thirds vote, is still contingent upon a ballot, um, vote by September 15th, 2017. Uh, so it's a two-step process. I will now recognize, um, Julie Kavanaugh from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just would like to reiterate, uh, some of the statements that have been made tonight, um, and to Mr. Brackett's, uh, point about us doing something for the youth in our community and, and all the money that we spent in the last 24 hours, to think about the fact that the kids are getting a use out of this, uh, gymnasium, and we hope to do more. I also think it's interesting that here we have a viable town asset that is being used, yet we're at, being asked, and we voted tonight, to put money towards a dilapidated, vacant, granted, historical building, but we're gonna put money towards that, and we're not going to spend money on something that's already making us some money, and we're looking to explore the other options out there. But most importantly, to Mr. Brackett's point, 125 kids, that's pretty impressive. So, I think that that is one thing we need to be looking at. To, to, uh, Mrs. Ford's point, ultimately, we're talking about putting housing next to an elementary school with a playground right in the backyard, a shared septic, and anytime that you open up that kind of housing opportunity, whatever it may be, affordable, elderly, whatever, and any kind of state monies or federal monies are being used, you don't have the ability to fetter who's going in and out of that type of housing. And again, we don't have control over local people just getting that housing. To Mr. Kakounis's point, we have all these expensive items that we've all just voted on that are equally important. Now we're gonna spend another $65,000 on something that's been looked at for two years, two committees, uh, confusing vote on my behalf, you know, when I went to the polls last year, I found it confusing. Uh, I also think that we need to think about the fact that as we're trying to figure out what to do and what best serves our community, we need to do it in a methodical way that considers the data, to the chairman's point, and we need to do it that this is an asset for our town that should serve our people. Services is a key word. So I ask you to really think hard before spending $65,000 more, which I agree with Mr. Kakounis, I can't imagine that it would be only $65,000. And I ask you to, most importantly, think of our kids in our community and the way that we can continue to build our system for our children, strengthen our school system, it benefits everybody here, whether you have children or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I'd like to just spend a, a moment of time, um, first of all, I want to commend the Board of Selectmen, um, for presenting the non-binding vote, uh, that was taken on this particular piece of property last year, um, and giving the, giving, giving the people, the townspeople, a chance to reassess the value of this particular piece of property. Um, I believe that having sold this piece of real estate for $665,000, which was the highest bid, I believe, or something in that vicinity, would have been a huge mistake. The idea is that we've given the town an opportunity to breathe some air into a building that they had no idea what they may or may not want to do with. And now I'm hearing from the audience tonight, Mrs. Ford, Mr. Kakounis, uh, Mr. Brackett, we have found a, a very serious need for a piece of real estate that we could have shunned. And many of you older residents understand what we've done in the past when we've shunned a piece of real estate. Um, it would be a huge mistake, in my opinion, um, and not only in my opinion, but in my opinion right now, to sell this piece of real estate, or to develop this piece of real estate, or to invest $65,000 in plans for affordable housing would be a huge mistake when in actuality, it seems as though we're able to use this piece of real estate quite well, as it is today. Now, I'm president and chairman of the Board of Mid-Cape Church Homes, and I say that not because I'm boasting, I'm saying that because I've taken some very serious time working with the Housing Committee here in the town of Howard, and working with Mid-Cape Church Homes over the past six years, to find that we have examined this piece of real estate closely. We have walked through it, we have, we have looked at it from every single angle. I'm relatively new with Mid-Cape Church Homes inasmuch as my predecessor, who's the former president and chairman of the Board of Mid-Cape Church Homes, Pinox Village, Mr. Lowry, former hospital administrator, had warned me many, many times that a repurposing of a municipal building, i.e. schoolhouse type of building, for the purposes of housing is not successful in 90% of the cases in the big cities of America. Once again, I look at the density, I look at the zoning, I look at the location, and I look at the need that the people of the town of Howard have for this building, and how it's developing, how the theater's being used, how the, the basketball, the gymnasium is being used, how the rooms are being used. What could be better? What could be better? We certainly do not need to spend $65,000 to draw plans for housing for the, i.e. elderly, or Section 8, or any other kind of housing. It's going to be a waste of time, and I will be the first to tell you, the town of Howard is not a landlord. They've never been a landlord, they don't maintain their property, and they couldn't be in the business of running housing. I think we should go along with the people of the town and, and truthfully, believe me, give this building, maintain this building for the community. We need it. Thank you.
This young lady over here, your name, please.
You called me young, thank you. Um, my name is Joy Jordan, I live on Connecticut Avenue in East Howard. I am speaking in strong opposition to this article. I am very opposed to the town spending any money to investigate housing at that location because I am vehemently opposed to housing at that location, and I don't say it lightly. I drive by that building twice a day for the past eight years with my children. They play in the soccer league with Detective Brackett, they play on the little league fields behind the building. I see older folks going in to play pickleball, I see artists taking their stuff in to paint their paintings, I see bands bringing their equipment in. It is the vibrant community use that the very West Howard Schoolhouse article was calling for. We have that already in this building, and I beg you to at least come by, if you haven't, and see all of the activity going on there. I mean, just, there's so many things that haven't even been listed. I know there's a summer program in marine sciences for kids. The Cape Cod Lighthouse Charter School rented out the auditorium for their spring musical. There is such a need for all of these services, and I would hate to see it just given away to housing when there is so much vibrancy already happening in that building.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, it's been moved to call the, uh, the question, it's a non-debatable, uh, motion. All those in favor of terminating debate, please so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I ruled that that, uh, motion passed. A town council informed me it's by a two-thirds vote. Um, I was mistaken when I said it had to be, um, unanimous vote. If I said that, so I am ruling that it passed. That's what I thought. It's a three, three-fourths, uh, majority, not, not a two-thirds, and I rule that, um, it passed by a three-quarters, uh, majority. Between the two of us, we got it right. So, we're back to the, to the, uh, motion in front of you. I'll reread it. It's moved to be accepted and adopted, and that the sum of $65,000 be borrowed for this purpose contingent upon the passage of a Proposition 2 1/2 debt exclusion vote, and it's to, um, refresh your memory, um, to borrow a sufficient sum of money to fund architectural and engineering plans to retain the Howard Middle School for development as a town-owned, affordable, and/or senior housing facility. So, if you are in favor of these plans and borrowing $65,000, um, for plans for the use of this property as a senior housing facility, then you will vote in favor of this article. If you're not in favor of that, you will vote against this article. And again, it's contingent upon a Prop 2 1/2 vote by September, um, 15th. So I would ask that, and, and this requires a two-thirds vote to pass, I would ask that all, all of you who are in favor of passage of this article, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no.
No.
I ruled that it did not pass. Uh, I encourage anybody who's leaving, uh, anything can be reconsidered, uh, the same night, so, uh, we've just got a few articles left. If you hang in there, uh, you'll prevent that from happening if, if somebody attempts it. Article 45, see if the town will vote to authorize revolving funds for certain town departments under Chapter 44, Section 53 1/2 of fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that this article be accepted and adopted in accordance with the chart published in the warrant.
Most have been made and seconded, uh, that the article be accepted and adopted in accordance with the chart published in the warrant. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Passes unanimously. Article 46, see if the town will vote to establish the creation and establishment of a revolving fund as authorized under Chapter 44, Section 53 1/2, for the community center director and facilities manager, for the purpose of funding continuing period, uh, period-appropriate restorations, maintenance, care, and support of town-owned property, not to exceed $100,000 annually with funds generated from receipt of lease or fees collected for short-term, year-round, temporary, or otherwise rooms, use, and rental, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under Article 46 is accept and adopt as printed in the warrant. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It is a vote. Article 47, see if the town will vote to establish a revolving fund effective FY 2018 under Chapter 44, Section 53 1/2, for the purpose of accepting monies generated from receipts paid to the town in lieu of sidewalks required to be installed in new subdivisions, credited to the revolving fund expenditures for sidewalk improvements, including consultant services, construction approved by the town planner, and the planning board in an amount not to exceed $50,000, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted as printed in the warrant.
Motion under 47 is accept and adopt as printed in the warrant. Is there any debate? Mr. Kakounis.
Mr. Moderator, could, uh, maybe somebody from the Finance Committee or the Planning Board, uh, know that, uh, is it possible to transfer some monies that are set aside at the Cape Cod Commission that has been taken in for, uh, the impacts of developments and transferred into this fund once we establish it? Or is this strictly gonna be used for, uh, our control and our implementation as developments
I think it's just a town fund, Leo. It's just a town fund, town revolving account. But I do know somebody at the county that maybe you'd wanna get in touch with to figure out what happened at the... We'll talk about that after the meeting. Any further debate on Article 47? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare. At Article 48, see if the town will vote to establish a new bylaw to be added to the code of the town of Howard under a new Chapter 8 entitled Departemental Revolving Funds and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted in accordance with the chart published in the warrant.
Motion's been made under Article 48 to accept and adopt in accordance with the chart published in the warrant. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It is a vote. Article 49, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from surplus revenue or available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the stabilization fund and to act fully thereon. Is there a positive motion? Does anybody have a positive motion? Hearing none, Mr. Brown.
I move this article be indefinitely postponed.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 49 be indefinitely postponed. Is there any debate? Hearing none, all those in favor of indefinite postponements, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The article's indefinitely postponed. Article 50, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate or transfer from surplus revenue or available funds a sufficient sum of money to be added to the OPEB trust fund and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
Thank you. I move this article be accepted and adopted and $53,000 be transferred from free cash for this purp- cash for this purpose.
Motion's made under Article 50 to accept and adopt and the sum of $53,000 be transferred from free cash for this purpose. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 51, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to pay any unpaid bills prior years as provided for in Chapter 44, Section 64, and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted and that the sum of $2,877.87 be transferred from free cash for this purpose.
Motion's made and seconded that the article be accepted and adopted and the sum of $2,877.87 be transferred from free cash for this purpose, and the bills are listed there in the article that total that amount. This is a motion to pay unpaid bills. It requires a four-fifths majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 52, see if the town will vote to supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects. To provide that, in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied. Mr. Brown.
I move that this article be accepted and adopted.
It's moved and seconded that this article be accepted and adopted. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Article 53, see if the town will vote to authorize its treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreement or agreements with banking institutions for fiscal year 2017 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53 F of the general laws. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted for fiscal year 2018.
The motion under Article 53 is it be accepted and adopted for fiscal year 2018. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Article 54, see if the town will vote to assume the liability and the man in provided by Section 29 of Chapter 91 of the general laws as amended by Chapter 516 and 524 of the Acts of 1950 for all damages that may be incurred by work to be performed by the Department of Public Works of Massachusetts for improvement, development, maintenance, and protection of tidal and non-tidal rivers, streams, harbors, tidewaters, foreshore, and shores along a public beach outside of Boston Harbor, including the Merrimack and Connecticut Rivers, in accordance with Section 11 of Chapter 91 of the general laws, and to authorize the selectmen to execute and deliver a bond of indemnity to the Commonwealth. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted.
It's been moved and seconded that Article 54 be accepted and adopted. Is there any debate? Hearing none, I'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is read so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. The article carries. This time, I make the following appointments to the Finance Committee. I reappoint Mr. Jack Brown to a three-year term on the Finance Committee, and I reappoint Mark Amiris to a three-year term on the Finance Committee. I'd also like to thank the Finance Committee for all their hard work this year. They've done a great job. I'd also like to mention, I was going to mention it last night, and then again it slipped my mind, this is the first town meeting in a long time. We haven't had one of our voters here, longtime resident of the town, Brooke Williams, who unexpectedly, frankly, passed away. Brooke was kind of an institution here at town meeting. I can see him over there at that left microphone continually, and it's a great loss to the town of Harwich. He served on a number of committees, and I know, I express the feeling of many when we say that we miss Brooke at town meetings. Article 55, to see what action the town will take in regard to the herring fisheries and to act fully thereon. Mr. Brown.
I move this article be accepted and adopted.
It's been moved and seconded that this article be accepted and adopted. Any debate? Who's going first? Mr. Kroll. Then we'll go to Mr. Houston.
I was looking something up in the history of the town of Harwich last summer, and I thought it might be of interest on this article. The book, The History of the Town of Harwich, was by John Payne, who was a local lawyer, and his office was above where Ruggies is for many, many years in the early 1900s. And he recites that in 1784, May 26, in particular, the inhabitants of the South Precinct, which I believe is us now, desiring some special legislation regarding the ale-wife fishery in the precinct, chose several people of what is now North Harwich to form a petition to the General Court in regard to ye herring brook. And in 1764, the reason they were doing this, it was estimated that there was a very large catch in the North Precinct, which I believe is now Brewster.
Right.
And in one day, more than two-
Where Mr. Locke lives.
Where Mr. Locke lives, yes. In one day, more than 200 barrels were taken. So the inhabitants of the town, becoming desirous of having town control over the ale-wife fishery, under special laws enacted for that purpose, elected a herring committee. And what they wanted was a piece of the action for all the money that the proprietors along the Herring River were making from the herring. Legislative action was taken, and in July 4, an act regulating taking ale-wives from the brooks in town was passed. Stony Brook in the North Precinct and Herring River in the South Precinct were streams which the town was authorized to control, particularly by the Act. The streams had, it seems, been controlled by proprietors, and the town had nothing to do with the proceeds resulting from the sale of the fish. For many years after the ale-wife fishery was controlled by the town, great care was taken of the privilege, and a great many barrels of ale-wives were secured yearly, and the town received some of the proceeds. I think this is the origin of this article because the committee had to meet, it said, "There has been no year, it seems, since the passage of the Act of 1787 that the town has neglected to choose an ale-wife committee which the Act enjoins upon the town to do at the annual meeting." I believe that's what we have to do, not form a committee, but we have to decide what we're going to do about the herring in the town this year.
I would agree, Mr. Kroll, and we try and do something each year, but I'll admit, we haven't had the historical reference like you've given us tonight in a long time. We appreciate that very much.
You're welcome.
And I know the selectmen, I can tell the selectmen to my left are looking over at you, Mr. Kroll, and saying, "Boy, wouldn't you make a great chairman of the herring committee?"
Well, I don't know what the next speaker has to say.
Well, he'd also be a great member of the committee. Wait till you hear what he has to say, because he's going to give us the annual report.
I'm expecting a row.
Yeah. We used to have Marge Marion give us this article each year as well, and we missed Marge on this. But, Mr. Houston, you have something on this as well.
I just wanted to report, as I have in recent years-
Yes.
-that the herring are coming up the river. It's been cold, so it's a little slow for the speed picking up, and I wanted to give a shout-out to, as you noticed, a lot of the high school kids were here over the last couple of nights, and there's some 20 of them or more that are part of the big group of the census takers that have been working for the last few years through the Conservation Trust and the Natural Resources Department and other organizations. So they were there to witness the fish coming through.
That's great.
That's the whole report.
This looks like another member of the committee if I was appointing it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. Any further debate on Article 55? Hearing none, I'll put it to a vote. The motion is accept and adopt. All those in favor so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting.
Don't move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by saying no. Meeting's adjourned. All those in opposition, may remain.